All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Zoning Board of Appeals for our public hearing for Thursday, June 13th. I'm going to call our first case, which is 1904 Habitat for Humanity of Cape Cod. And let me remind you of the board. This is a case that has been continued. The board is myself, Mr. Ponte Briand, Mr. Sullivan, this is Siani, and Mr. Drucker is substituting for Mr. Putnam tonight. He has signed the papers to indicate that he has, in fact, reviewed all of the prior hearings. So I would like to hear from the applicant.
Just to reiterate, we're in the process where we have a draft decision prepared by your counsel. We have reviewed it. There have been some blanks that needed to be filled in and some other information to be corrected and we're in the middle of that process. Certainly, let your counsel report to you where we are with respect to those things. Otherwise, we're here to answer any further questions you have.
Do we? I know we do, in fact, have a letter on this one, a couple of letters actually.
We do. I might want to mention Chris had to go home sick.
Oh, yes, our secretary is also home sick, so we're working on a smaller staff.
She trusted me with the letters, which says something for the rest of the group. She wouldn't trust them.
No, not the rest of us.
I'll read them. This is from Rebecca Eldridge, who's the committee secretary for the, I guess it's the Department of Health. At last night's Board of Health meeting, the board voted to approve the Habitat for Humanity variance of installing a catch basin 42 feet from the well on parcel 120 MAP 16. They asked me to reach out to you and let you know so you can inform the ZBA. Then we have a letter from the Wellfleet Fire Department, but this is actually a letter for the Old Bank LLC from Chief Pauli. But Chief Pauli's letter for this, which I happened to see, was one line saying he approves the project so long as the driveway is where it is. We went through that last time at length. A letter from Ellen Rubenstein dated June 11th. While I cannot make it to the zoning committee meeting this week, as a full-time, tax-paying resident of Wellfleet, I want to make it known that I give my full support to Habitat and its endeavors to help build homes for those in need in our town. As a Wellfleet resident, I am saddened that our community does not wholeheartedly embrace Habitat and their mission. Knowing our shortage of affordable housing to be a real issue, they should need to appear before the zoning committee is unfathomable to me. Please take into consideration those who need our help and do the right thing. Please grant Habitat the permission they require to build the much-needed homes. And now a letter of June 13th, 2019, from Charles, if I mispronounce the last name, my apologies, Charles Merzbacher and Marcia Dalkin. I apologize, I probably bungled that. This letter relates to the request for a special permit for Habitat for Humanity of Cape Cod to build four new affordable homes in the Old Kings Highway neighborhood. The development is identified in your agenda as 2254, et cetera, et cetera. Our house abuts the properties that are to be developed. We support the expansion of affordable housing in Wellfleet, but we ask that your board withhold approval of any special permits until the partners involved in planning the Habitat project bring the proposed access for the properties in line with community and environmental standards. The current plans for the Habitat project call for a steep paved driveway that will enter Old Kings Highway within 40 feet of our well and that of our neighbors, Harry and Jean Rubenstein. The most cursory online search on stormwater pollution will reveal the role that runoff from impermeable surfaces such as paved roads and driveways plays in fouling water supplies. This is not a hypothetical concern. The effects of chemicals such as the hydrocarbons associated with oil and gasoline entering into water supplies has been well documented, and guidelines for protecting water against such pollutants are well established. A separate concern regarding the proposed driveway has to do with its effect on the character of Old Kings Highway. This narrow, tree-lined, historic road has been officially designated a scenic road. Allowing a paved drive to enter into Old Kings Highway doesn't just threaten the physical integrity of the road, it establishes a precedent for ignoring other official historic designations. There are viable alternatives to the unsound plans for the paved driveway. The town of Wellfleet and the developers of the Habitat project have a choice. Either they can put their resources towards a safe and appropriate driveway design, or they can spend those same resources towards fighting our efforts to protect our water supply and property. We are eager to work with the town and the developers to arrive at a solution to this problem. If you need any further input from us, please don't hesitate to write us via email at, he gives his email address. That's the last of the letters.
Okay. Do we have any questions from the audience? Okay. Do I have any questions from the board? Mr. Lynch?
No comment. Now, we've got someone.
Oh, I'm sorry, go.
I just want to identify myself as Charles Merzbacher, so I'm the author of that letter, and I'd be happy to answer any questions related to it. I also do have one. By pure luck, when I came to the house this afternoon, one of my neighbors said, "Do you have a photograph of the lake?" And I didn't know what she was referring to, but she was referring to the water that gathers pretty much right where the driveway is proposed for this. And I'd just like, if I could, just to show you the photographs, that's all. And I won't amplify on my letter, I think my letter speaks for itself. So this is Old Kings Highway that you're looking at?
Yeah, I know that, thanks.
And this is virtually at the point of entrance. Our well is directly to the side of this. So this is unpaved road right now, and as you can see, there's several, that's, I mean, you can wade in this.
Since you're displaying it, could you email a copy of that to Chris?
Yes, I can.
For the file, thank you.
If you've had a chance to see it. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to respond to the question?
Oh, sure. Yeah. And with me is Bob Reedy, who's from JM O'Reilly and Associates, and I want to put words in his mouth, but the design of the drainage for the entire subdivision, its intention is to keep all the water that lands on it, on it, so that it doesn't go down, excuse me, doesn't go down into that area. We're required to design to a 25-year storm, and we have exceeded that by 50 percent. Most engineers, I think, would say this is overkill, and so it is. But the idea is that water does not get down and contribute to the lake or whatever is going on in that area.
Will the water and the gasoline and what have you get into that Trenchman's well or not? I mean, the fact that it's designed to something doesn't mean it won't get in as well. We all know that.
The water is intercepted at the street, at Old Kings Highway, by a trench drain and catch basins with solid bottoms that are piped into leaching structures?
So the water isn't going to get there?
The water isn't going to get to Old Kings Highway?
I wanted to clarify that. So you just saw a picture, and I've been down that road, and I've seen, you know, I almost broke my fishing rod once or twice. But you're saying your design will take the water and prevent it from going there in the first place?
I'm going to let the engineer talk to it.
Is that right? I'm just trying to understand that, that's all.
We have a series of catch basins, and we have the road pitched to the side so that all water will be moved to the side of the road where the catch basins are. They're putting a series all the way down the road, including a trench drain right at the property line, and then in addition to that, another catch basin that's in the apron of the road. So even the stuff that's off of our property, we'll be able to catch everything that's on the paved surfaces that we possibly can.
And I did note that apparently the Board of Health approved the projects.
Yes, and I guess I could elaborate just a little bit on that. I was there at the meeting last night. It's a particular Wellfleet health regulation that says any catch basin that serves a paved surface, that's in within 50 feet of a proposed well, requires a variance. Now, talking to the health director, they said that the opposite also exists, it's an existing well with a proposed catch basin. But also, they have an understanding that really what it should mean is any leaching catch basin that's within 50 feet of a well, because that is what actually would allow stormwater to get out and into the groundwater within 50 feet of the well. What we have in this scenario is a solid catch basin that instead of allowing that water that's on the paved apron to get down into the groundwater and then go directly into the groundwater surface, it's piped into a solid catch basin, which then pipes to a leaching facility which is greater than 50 feet from the well. So what we're doing is effectively taking stormwater that is close to the well and moving it further away so that we don't have any issues with that. Obviously, the health department didn't have any issues with what we're doing since it's, what we're doing is a positive in their eyes, so that they had no issues with our proposal there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Did you have any question?
No, no comment.
Will?
Yeah.
I just want to ask, so you think that this gentleman's issue is not a problem?
I don't think that the pavement or anything that we're doing in terms of the road that we're putting in, we're going to handle all the stormwater that's kind of coming off of our site in terms of anything coming down the road, we're going to catch all of that. And we've put in ample drainage controls to make sure of that.
Anything else?
Someone wants to recognize.
You have to go over a microphone, sir.
They haven't set one.
Yes, one over there.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
And your name for the record?
Bruce Litman, one of the Abiding Properties, number 108 there, Old Long Pond Road. Just speaking to the alternate choices that were proposed for possible entry to the main four lots that are being considered here, I don't know, and I haven't seen, and the most recent packet of information didn't really mention it, but the Eversource Power Company, which has changed names a couple of times, the contact I had with them a number of years ago now, anything that sounded like it would be an approach to this plan Habitat has, anything approaching a paved road, certainly driveway, or even a pebbled sort of driveway, or a sand or dirt driveway, would be opposed to their wishes that nothing approaching anything that parallels their line of north-south or whatever it is, that paralyze the sides of their property, would be precluded. Now, if my information from several years ago, when this was first proposed, was just that, now, I don't, haven't seen anything that said that this has been changed, and I don't see any record of anybody contacting Eversource to ask, "Could we do this?" So I hope you would consider that, maybe before passing things, certainly, especially concerning alternative access to the property, somebody would ask Eversource what their consideration would be. That's what I hope can happen.
So I will ask them. Have you discussed this with Eversource? Is there an issue with Eversource?
I think it was discussed historically. The real issue was not Eversource, it was Chief Pauli who said no, Chief Frisell who said no, and National Heritage and Endangered Species said you cannot work in the easement period. So we have nothing going on in the easement.
Right. So as I understand it, this entrance way is not the Eversource entrance way that was discussed historically?
It is not, no. We're not even talking about that.
I have a map from Habitat for Humanity that shows a potential alternate passage from the Eversource property, as it's now known, into the proposed Habitat plan. So I don't know why somebody would say that has never been considered.
I don't think anyone, I don't think they're saying it hasn't been considered. I think they're saying the operative word there is alternate, it was a consideration, it is not in this particular proposal.
Okay, but it was drawn on a map as a possibility.
Once upon a time.
And that's what I meant when I said it was a while ago.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Let's go to the attorneys here.
Let's go to the attorney. Yes. Okay, Madam.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. As Attorney Brody represented, and as I mentioned at our last hearing, I did begin a draft of the decision that I circulated to Mr. Brody on Monday or Tuesday, and got some comments back from him today. It's mostly just boilerplate or things that we've already outlined as identified as being, you know, waivers that need to be addressed. So there are certainly things.
If you don't mind sharing this microphone.
Sure. So there are certainly things that we need to get the board to actually act upon before we can finalize some of these things. But to go through just a few of them, one would be, for example, surety, whether or not there's going to be any requirement by the board for any sort of surety or a performance guarantee to make sure that the roadway, which is going to serve as a common access drive, is actually constructed according to the plans. And typically, we would then provide some language where the town would designate someone such as a consulting engineer who would help provide that cost estimate for the surety, which does not have to be done prior to your vote, but would certainly have to be something we take into consideration. There is the request for the waiver. We talked about the sign. We talked a little bit about this at our last hearing and got some clarification that what Habitat is seeking is a funding sign that advertises that, you know, this is, in fact, their project. And the size of the sign proposed would be 13 and 1/3 square feet, so actually 40 inches by 48 inches, and they're asking for a waiver of the six-square-foot limitation, the size of a temporary sign during construction. We've already talked about the Board of Health grant of a waiver, so that's something that we should incorporate into your decision as well. We've received comments from the fire chief, that was a question last time, about whether or not the fire chief felt he could get adequate access. And I've seen an email from the fire chief dated, I believe, June 4th, where he indicates that the design as presented would be acceptable to him as long as the accessway is off of Old Kings Highway. The shed setbacks was a question from last time, in terms of exactly what are the various setbacks, because there's, depending upon whether we're talking about a side yard or a rear yard, there's either a 30-foot setback or a 25-foot setback. The engineer did provide information for all four of the lots, where the setbacks are either range between 11 feet to 17 feet for all the sheds as they are proposed right now. I think we would then also have to go through the subdivision rules and regulations and the waivers that were requested. At our last meeting, if you recall, there was a representative of the planning board present who had indicated that the planning board did not actually provide any recommendation on those waivers, and we're leaving it entirely up to the Zoning Board of Appeals for that. But there were a few of the waivers that were requested that in some of the discussions it appeared maybe a waiver wasn't necessary. One of those was a request for a waiver with respect to inspections. But if I heard correctly last time, there was a willingness on the part of the applicant to coordinate and have those inspections coordinated with the town, so I question whether or not there is actually a need for a waiver or whether that is something that we can now agree upon. We also talked about the fact that the fifth lot shown on the subdivision is to be marked or a notation to be placed on the plan, that that is not a buildable lot, and I believe the applicant agreed to that verbally. There were also, there's also a request for a waiver for the installation of monuments. And upon looking at this a little bit more closely, this has to do with survey monuments for purposes of demarcating the proper boundary lines. I know that that is a waiver that's been requested, however, we're currently involved in a different project that was a town project that also involved the Housing Authority and also involved the construction of affordable housing, and we're currently involved in a land dispute over title issues related to that. That sits in the back of my mind as I think of something going forward where we're talking about constructing four single-family homes to be 100 percent affordable. I'd hate to think that at some point, 19 years down the line, which is what we're facing in this other situation, that these owners of these houses may have some question raised as to what do they actually own or their title to it. So I would just ask the board to consider that before acting on the request to waiver from the installation of any monuments.
If I may, we're willing to withdraw that request.
The other aspects, I think I'll have to go to the subdivision design with respect to the road. And even though we are calling this a road, technically, it's going to be a private driveway, so it does not meet a number of the construction standards that would normally be required of a road. So we'd have to consider those various waivers with respect to things such as pavement width and the dead-end street, et cetera, and also with respect to guardrails and posts. And then finally, whether or not, since it will be a shared driveway, it cannot have a street sign, but the applicant has agreed to put some sort of a neighborhood sign name so that it can be identified. So that's all I have on your list of items that we would have to actually take some affirmative votes on. One other thought that came to mind, and this was based on our last meeting, was a condition with respect to the 30-foot buffer, and a question was raised by one of the residents as to some of the activities of what could be done in the buffer. Could people store boats? Could solar panels be put there, something like that? If the board wished, that we could certainly impose some conditions to make sure that the 30-foot buffer is, in fact, preserved as a vegetated buffer.
There was one other one we discussed, I think. I'm just trying to find it, but I can't, I've got so much paper here. There was like a waiver for anything that may occur in the future with zoning.
All future zoning provisions, and, well, you're right, we did discuss that at our last meeting, I think it was you, Mr. Drucker, who raised it. That is sort of a broad request, thinking that going forward, that these properties would forever be exempt from zoning in some way, especially where they are going to be four single-family houses. You can certainly imagine a situation where folks might, at some point, want to put some type of addition onto the house. Certainly, there might be variance requests that are included with that. So that is a very serious waiver to consider granting, and I don't know whether it's necessary, given the project that's currently before you.
Thank you.
So now I'm not sure what the most efficient way through this, so walk me through this.
So we have a few things to do. One is to, if the board has no further questions or doesn't think that there's any more information to be received from the audience or from any department heads or from the applicant or his representatives, then we can close the public hearing. The board does only have 40 days, though, once you close the public hearing, to deliberate. So during that time, we do need to go through the various waivers. I find that as you go through the waivers and decide whether or not to grant them one by one, I think that helps the board formulate your ultimate decision, which is whether or not you're going to grant or disapprove this particular permit. If the board feels prepared to do that tonight, we could certainly close the public hearing, we could certainly go through the various waivers and take votes on that. I would then ask the board to schedule for your next meeting, if possible, where we come back and actually go through a draft decision, make sure that we've captured all of the waivers, make sure that there aren't any additional conditions that have come to mind, and then ultimately vote on the decision. And I'd have a draft for you in advance of that meeting so that you could see what this looks like.
Okay. Do you feel comfortable talking about the waivers now, then, gentlemen?
Sure.
Okay, all right. So we take them one at a time, then?
I move to close the public portion of the hearing and move on to waivers.
Okay. Vic has seconded, and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the public hearing is closed. Okay.
So, so why don't we, excuse me, why don't we begin then with the dimensional waivers for the various lots? And I don't know whether this chart has been provided to the board or not, but in your application, there was a chart outlining some of the waivers that were requested, but I'll elaborate those for you here. So with respect to Lot 1, and I ask Attorney Brody, jump in if I misread anything. With respect to Lot 1, one of the requested waivers is from the minimum lot size. 30,000 square feet is required, 18,494 square feet is proposed. Would you like me, Madam Chairwoman, to go through all of the dimensional requirements for Lot 1 and vote them as a block, or?
I think we could vote, oh, I would be comfortable voting the waiver as a whole. I don't think we need to vote on each individual.
Yeah, that is mine, too. Yeah, I think we can vote on the dimension. Under the dimensional requirements, I think we can take that as one block.
Okay, that's fine. So would you like me to run through them for the four lots? Sure.
Yeah, let's hear them quickly.
Let's hear them, sure.
Put them in there.
Every single lot is undersized, not meeting the 30,000-square-foot requirement, so they're requesting waivers from lot size for all of them. Every lot is requesting a waiver from the minimum lot frontage of 135 feet, primarily because it's going to be a private driveway rather than a road. So they will all technically have zero frontage as far as a road is concerned. Lot 1 is also seeking a modest reduction in the rear yard setback. 30 feet is required, 28.2 feet is proposed. Lot 2 is also requesting a front yard setback waiver. 30 feet is required, 25.2 feet is proposed. Lot 2 also requests a rear yard setback. 30 feet is required, 25 feet is proposed. Lot 3 requires a front modest front yard setback waiver. 30 feet is required, 28.9 feet is proposed. 28.9 feet is proposed. Lot 4 requires a rear yard setback. 30 feet is required. 28.8 feet is proposed. And that completes the dimensional requirements for each lot.
Now, on those, do we move second and vote on each one? Is that the way it works?
Yes.
Okay, on each waiver, all right. Any discussion on those?
No. I move that we accept the waiver. Is that the proper way to word it? I move that we accept the waiver.
Second.
Seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Okay. With respect to the shed waiver, as we talked about previously, depending upon whether the shed is located, if the shed is located in the rear, there's a 30-foot rear yard setback and a 25-foot side yard setback. For Lot 1, an 11-foot setback is proposed. For Lot 2, a 17-foot setback is proposed. For Lot 3, a 13-foot setback is proposed. And for Lot 4, a 13-foot setback is proposed.
May I chime in here?
Please, yes.
All of the requests are for side setback waivers, not rear. So it's the 25, not the 13.
And that's for the sheds. Side setbacks for the sheds.
I move that we accept that proposed waiver.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Now, going to just the general waivers requested. The applicant has requested a waiver from the application fee. They have, however, paid for the cost of mailing notices.
I move to accept the waiver.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The applicant's also requested a waiver from zoning bylaw section 6.17 with respect to a DPW curb cut permit.
You're on a roll, Trevor.
If I may, if I may jump in, that might seem to be a little bit odd. When you grant a comprehensive permit, the board has the authority to grant every single permit that every other local board has the authority to grant. So it isn't saying that you don't need a curb cut. Obviously, they're bringing in a common driveway. They need a curb cut or some permit. What we would ultimately be doing here through the comprehensive permit would be effectively granting that driveway curb cut permit to them. And I think, and Attorney Brody, correct me if I'm wrong, was this also a request for a waiver from that fee for the curb cut permit?
I don't know. Yeah, we generally ask for waivers of all fees. If that's just what that relates to, that's all we're talking about.
So it would allow them to do the curb cut without having to go back to the DPW?
Exactly.
Okay. So I move to accept the proposed waiver.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
They've requested a waiver from your zoning bylaw section 6.28, which is a provision, one of your inclusionary zoning provisions. This is 100% affordable, so I think they have more than satisfied that particular requirement.
Yep. I move to accept the waiver.
All in favor?
We discussed a few minutes ago the size of the sign that's requested at 13 and 1/3 square feet for the temporary construction sign.
Is there a requirement that it come down at a certain time?
Yes, after construction's completed.
Okay, just so.
But also, you could, as part of the permit, you could say the sign is to come down.
Can we make that a condition?
We could as a condition. For example, you could say the sign is to come down within 30 days after the final certificate of occupancy is granted or something like that.
So we know it comes down, so we don't see something else go up there.
Can someone keep track of the conditions that we're gonna ask for?
Yeah.
I think regarding the sign, the advertising that they do as part of this is critically important to the help that they get.
Right.
So I think the waiver is more than.
I'm from Chicago. We used to put all the politicians' names.
Is more than.
So this is, it shouldn't be up there forever, that's all.
Right, right, right. No, I know, yes, yes.
That's all.
I move to accept the waiver.
I agree. Second.
All in favor? Colin, will you keep track of the fact that we want to?
Impose that condition, yes, which is exactly why I want to provide a draft to you to your next meeting, to make sure we've incorporated all of this. The next waiver requested is section 8.2 of the zoning bylaw, which is Mr. Drucker's provision, a favorite provision about requiring compliance with future bylaws.
It's not my favorite provision, but I've seen it abused in other situations.
I don't like that one.
Mr. Brody would never abuse it, but 20 years from now, you never know.
Well, it also seems, you know, if, for example, that somebody wanted to add something, they could come for a special permit, and we could consider the case at the time. So they don't need to be.
They can come for modification of this.
Or for modification of this.
So how do we handle a waiver that we don't feel comfortable with?
You simply don't grant it.
Okay.
So I would say it should be a motion. I prefer that you take a motion to deny it, but I do draft the comprehensive permit to say that only these waivers that are expressly stated here and granted and all others are deemed denied. So if you don't want to take a vote to deny the waiver, you could certainly do that as well.
I move to deny that, the waiver to section 8.2.1.
If I open my big mouth, I'll second it.
All in favor of denying?
There is also a provision in your zoning bylaw, section 8.5, that states that all appeals of ZBA decisions are to the court. Not all appeals under 40B would be to court. They would either be to court or to the Housing Appeals Committee. In my opinion, I don't think you need to grant a waiver of this provision. I think state law overrides that provision. But since it is on the requested waiver list, if you'd like to vote on it, that's fine as well.
Why not? Yes, so motion to deny.
All right, so I move to deny the waiver to section 8.5.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Could I just ask for a friendly amendment? That would be a motion to deny as not necessary?
Yes. Motion to deny is not necessary.
The Board of Health did grant the waiver, as you heard earlier tonight, about the distance between, and hopefully I've got this correct, between the non-leaching catch basin being 42 feet from it of Butter's well as opposed to 50 feet. It would, since this is also a local Board of Health regulation, the ZBA should also vote to grant that waiver.
I move to grant the waiver as approved by the Board of Health.
I'll second it.
Favor?
Ms. Murray, just for my own education, wasn't it redundant of the Board of Health to do that?
Yes.
Yeah, technically, we could have just done that.
I was just curious.
Or technically, what they could have done, rather than grant it, they could have just made a recommendation to the ZBA that you vote to do it.
I just wanted to clarify, I just wanted to understand that, that's all.
Right. There's also a request to waive section 800 of the Board of Health regulations with respect to fees.
Respect to what?
To fees.
Oh, fees, yeah.
Yeah, I move to allow, to approve the waiver.
Second.
All in favor?
If I may, just one question to Attorney Brody. The nitrogen aggregation plan is actually not a waiver. You're submitting.
It is not a waiver. Probably better characterized as a condition.
As a condition, okay, so we will build that in. Then, the Planning Board subdivision rules and regulations, they're requesting a waiver from section 1.02 for the ZBA to approve the plan in a comprehensive permit, even where subdivision plan is actually presented. The zoning Board of Appeals acts as the subdivision granting authority. You act in place of the Planning Board. So you do have the authority to grant that plan.
Right. I move to accept the waiver.
Second.
All in favor?
There's a request to waive the Planning Board subdivision rules and regulations, 2.01 to 2.06. That has to do with various submission requirements, including a performance guarantee, inspections, as-built plans, profiles, cross-sections, et cetera. As the applicant has indicated, they would be willing to provide a performance guarantee. Was that right, or a covenant?
Well, a covenant, I think, would be adequate in this situation, rather than a surety bond or cash bond, which just increases the cost of the housing.
And you'll also agree to the inspections, right? So we're not waiting?
Absolutely.
Okay.
That's just a matter of the ordinary course of business. We're professional builders.
Okay. And I think even where this is, is to as-built plans. We always get as-built plans on every project out there, so I don't think you're specific. Are you saying you don't?
No. We know that they are in the conditions.
Okay, so we'll provide as-built plans?
Yes.
Okay. And also, the applicant has agreed to provide a roadway and open space maintenance fund to be controlled by the Homeowners Association. That is a condition also of, or will be a condition of the permit?
That's agreed.
Am I missing anything else there under those sections, Attorney Brody?
I don't think so.
Okay. So I don't think there's a need for the board, then, to vote on any of those, because that's going to be dealt with through conditions?
Okay.
Okay. They're requesting a waiver from section 3.01, which is the requirement that all lots comply with the zoning bylaw, where you've just granted the waivers previously.
I move to accept the waiver.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you. They request a waiver from Planning Board subdivision requirement, section 4.03, with respect to roads, with the access actually being a private driveway as opposed to a full road construction. And we might as well also incorporate section 4.04, which is requesting a waiver from the dead-end street. Again, they emphasize that this is a shared driveway, but there will be a hammerhead turnaround area. They're requesting a waiver from section 4.08 for guardrails and posts, and a waiver from section 4.09 relative to the shared driveway having a neighborhood sign as opposed to a street sign.
Okay. Can we do those as a bunch?
I think you could do those as the street standards together.
Yep. I move to accept the waivers to the sections noted.
Section 4, I think. All in favor?
Then there's a generic request under section 5.01 for a waiver from the requirement of compliance with the subdivision rules and regulations. I think that's a housekeeping thing, because you've granted the specific waivers up above.
I move to accept the waiver.
Second.
All in favor?
And then, finally, a more broad request to waive other fees. We've discussed the Health Department fees, but there's also Building Department and Fire Department fees as well.
I move to accept the waiver regarding the fees.
Even the fire, we give them new trucks, we need the money. All right, second.
All in favor?
I think, unless I've missed any?
The one on my list was the inspections, and that's withdrawn.
And you've withdrawn that, so I did not note that.
Yep.
You had mentioned monuments.
Yes. That's the one, that's the one that the applicant agreed to withdraw.
Yeah, that one was withdrawn.
Thank you.
Okay.
So with that, I'd ask the board to continue this matter, your deliberations on this, to your next meeting, bearing in mind we've got 40 days now to get the decision pulled together. What I will do prior to that meeting is, through Christine, circulate a draft to you so we make sure that all the waivers are built in and the conditions, and you have a chance to review it finally to voting on it.
All right, so I will entertain a motion to continue this.
Do you have a calendar?
Yes, I do.
July 11.
July 11.
So moved. I move.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And you will be here on July 11.
Well, we should have asked that.
We should have asked them that, yes.
It's okay.
He will now.
They will now, they've got 40 days.
Forty days and 40 nights, isn't that biblical?
Yes, it is. That probably is where it came from.
It gets worse than that.
All right. Thank you very much. We will move on.
We're going to the bank.
We're going to the bank, yeah. So I'm taking these slightly out of order in the interest of efficient use of Town Council's time. So we are moving next to case 19.19-12, meant for the Old Bank.
Good evening.
Where is yours?
Zach is just taking up a couple of additional letters we just received late in the process.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. I appreciate your hearing our case out of order. For the record, I'm Attorney Lester J. Murphy, Jr.
Yes, so we can.
Attorney Lester J. Murphy, Jr., from East Dennis. Here along with me is the applicant, Zach Mint. We also have Mark Wickstead of Boller Engineering, Eddie Dominguez, who is a security consultant. As indicated, this, excuse me, was filed as a special permit application by the Old Bank LLC under section 8.4.2, as well as 6.3.13 of the zoning bylaws. What is proposed is to establish a retail trade business involving the retail sale of marijuana at the 10 Main Street property in the central district, zoning district. The property, as I'm sure you're well aware, is located at the intersection of Main Street and Route 6. It's been the site of a number of commercial activities over the years, most recently a bank. When we filed the application, when Zach put the package together, he included the request for the findings of fact, the site plan, elevation and floor plans for the building, a transportation analysis, a request for a waiver of financial impact study, the zoning map, assessors' records, and other information required as part of the application. Under the zoning bylaw, section 5.32 says that for a retail business in this particular zone, this board has to grant a special permit. Other zones, it's not required, but, excuse me, a retail sale requires a special permit. We had also filed a request for a review as a development of significant impact, although it's important for the board to understand in looking at that, that that normally is triggered, and is under the bylaw, triggered by a use that requires 10 or more parking spaces. In this case, we actually only hit the level of requiring seven parking spaces, although given what was the use that's being proposed here, we felt, and Zach felt, it was best to give the board more information rather than less. to give the board more information rather than less in reviewing the application. Now certainly, as I'm sure the board is well aware, under 8.4.2, for this board to grant the special permit that we're requesting, you have to first find that the benefits of this proposal, this retail business, outweigh any adverse effects on the town or the vicinity, taking into consideration the stated district objectives as well as matters listed in sections 8.4, 2.1, 2.2, and 3 of the bylaw. Now, looking at section 3.2, the purpose part of the bylaw, it states the district objective in the central district is to provide concurrent development of residential and non-residential uses, subject to conditions to assure spatial segregation of incompatible uses. This neighborhood is really a mixture of residential and commercial uses. There's a gas station, restaurant bar operations, retail sales, a bank, and professional offices, all in the immediate neighborhood. This particular property, as again, as the board is well aware, has been the site of various commercial operations, including professional offices, a bank branch, so that we believe the retail marijuana sales at this location will be sufficiently separated from other uses, especially residential uses, that could be in conflict. So in putting together the application, Zach did fill out the, why we believe that this proposal complies with the various criteria set forth in 8.4.2, and I will just briefly address those. Subsection 1 asks the board to look at the suitability of the proposed location for the use, taking into account a number of considerations, including what goes on at the nearby land uses and whether they would be supported or damaged by having this retail marijuana business. In this particular case, we believe this activity will not have any damaging effects on nearby land uses. This is a retail business. It will not be open late at night. It will not generate significant waste or pollution, and it will have regular daily business hours. The board also has to determine that the use that we are proposing for this site and whether that would be displaced or preempted by this use on any others. The retail business will be similar to the retail bank business that was there, with customers driving in, going in, purchasing product, and leaving. This site, we believe, is a good site for this operation. It provides easy access off of Route 6, does not require customers to drive into the center of town or other heavily traveled commercial areas. There are traffic lights to control the traffic in and out of Route 6, and that, more importantly, we don't believe that there will be any other businesses or residences in the immediate vicinity that will be somehow damaged, timed, or preempted by this use. I think the other thing that's important for the board to remember is that retail marijuana sales operations are strictly regulated both by the state and by the town. It's my understanding that the town itself, through the selectmen, have determined that they are not going to allow more than three of these businesses in town. So this is a situation where this particular type of activity, this use, is more heavily regulated than almost any other retail activity that exists in the state or in the town. The board is also supposed to determine whether the site is more sensitive than most of the zone's sites, and whether there'd be environmental damage. Before, coming before this board, Zach filed with the Conservation Commission a notice of intent and received an order of conditions authorizing the site improvements for this retail marijuana establishment. Obviously, the Conservation Commission was satisfied that there would be no adverse environmental impacts to the neighborhood, to the immediately adjacent wetland, so that we believe, again, that this board clearly can make that requisite finding. Subsection 2 looks to this particular activity and its intensity and its impact on the neighborhood, and whether the proposal contributes to the diversity of services, and obviously not housing opportunities. Again, it's our understanding, hopefully, with all, if all the licensing, all the permitting goes through, this will be one of the three establishments of its type allowed in the town. Right now, there are none. Right now, obviously, all of the towns in the area are scrambling, determining how to handle this. Provincetown has taken a very, not surprisingly, open approach, and so far has approved a fair number of these establishments. Wellfleet has been a little more circumspect in their approach. But again, this is a business activity that, it does appear to be based upon others that have opened up in the state, a demand for this product, and it will be, again, heavily regulated. I've been involved in doing this kind of work for a long time. I've never seen a kind of business having to be established that requires the oversight, the security, the regulations, both, again, on the state and local levels, that this does, for obvious reasons. But again, I think the board and the neighborhood can take some comfort in the fact that there's going to be a lot more oversight, a lot more security, and a lot more regulation of this than there are in most other businesses. The board is also to look at the seasonal consequences in addition to the peak period congestion. In this particular case, this business will be open year-round, unlike a lot of other retail businesses. Obviously, it will be busier in the summer, which is not, which is to be expected and not unusual. One of the things that we did do, and it's included in your packet, and we'll be happy to address it, and Zach will address it in more detail, is a traffic analysis was prepared for this. And because of the fact that various states have already authorized and allowed retail marijuana sales, the International Traffic Institute now does actually have details, and they have performance standards, they have actually come up with criteria as to the anticipated traffic demand for this type of business of this size. Interestingly, the total number of trips in a day for this business is greater than for a retail bank. However, what's very interesting is that the peak PM trip generation for this business is almost identical to a bank. So although overall, during the course of the day, there, it is anticipated, there will be more vehicle trips to this property. It is expected that the peak traffic time is not going to be much different than the bank was. Also, the level of service, as determined, is not changed on the surrounding roads. C talks about whether it's proposed service to local in preference to regional markets and to year-round in preference to seasonal. And again, this is primarily designed to sell this product to town residents. It is a year-round business to serve the local population 12 months out of the year. We do anticipate that there will be employment opportunities. The expectation during the winter, probably three to four full-time employees, and during the summer, six to eight full-time employees. But there is both seasonal and year-round employment will be provided. And under subsection 3, it's looking at the building and site design. They look at whether scenic views and public ways have been considerably treated. One of the things, and it came up in a number of the letters that we saw have been sent into the board, this is obviously one of the most important sites you see coming in when you pull off of Route 6, heading into the center of Wellfleet. And unfortunately, for a number of years, it's not been in a very good state of repair. It just hasn't been well-maintained. Zach has provided plans, renderings, showing what he is proposing to do to upgrade this building, upgrade the property, install the parking, install additional landscaping, that we believe really will significantly enhance this gateway, one of the first buildings you see when you pull off Route 6, heading in towards the center of Wellfleet and to the harbor. And again, we believe it really will be a substantially better appearance for the property and for the town. Zach is, and we'll get into more detail, proposing screening to try to, you can't totally hide, but screen as great as, as much as possible, what is proposed for the 14, total of 14 parking spaces. And native plants are being used to do this. Again, this is something that was reviewed by the Conservation Commission, and they have approved the plans. So again, we believe that the board can make the requisite findings required under section 8.4.2 to justify the special permit grant. So the site plan, as I indicated, shows a total of 14 parking spaces, although based upon our calculations of what is required under the zoning bylaws, only seven are actually required for this use. So he is proposing, just to be sure that he can handle even the peak business, he is proposing additional parking beyond the minimum required under the zoning bylaws. What is, it's anticipated that the traffic pattern, again, if you've had a chance to see the site and take a look at the site plan, the traffic pattern, people will enter at the curb cut closest to Route 6, will then go around the building, parking, and exit at the curb cut furthest away from Route 6, again, to try to minimize conflict with intersection traffic. Zach will go over in more detail the floor plans, delineating how the customers are going to enter in one place, have to go through, not security, but have to be checked in. There's a waiting area, and then only a certain number of people can be allowed into the sales area at any one time. So again, it's very carefully controlled. The, Eddie Dominguez, who is in charge of designing the security for this, is here tonight. He will be able to answer any questions the board may have. Zach has consulted with both the fire and the police department. And again, the situation is that it's heavily regulated. Security is crucial on these, and both through the police department and the state, it's very carefully regulated. This isn't a normal, it's not like a package store where you just walk in and there's beer here and wine there and whatever. You walk in, you have to be checked in, you have to show your ID, you have to prove your age. Then singly or in small numbers, you're allowed into the actual retail sales area. So it's very different from almost any other retail type of operation. So again, this been carefully designed, traffic flow on the site, foot traffic in the building, all have been carefully designed to be sure that it will be operating properly and will not be a disturbance to the neighborhood, but will, we quote, will provide a needed service. Now, one of the things we did file under 6.3.13 as a development of significant impact, again, more having to do with the type of use involved rather than the traffic or the packing space increase. And in doing that, what we did provide to the board was the traffic analysis. One of the things we have found is that although submitted to the planning board, it is our understanding that the planning board has not made any recommendations on this matter. And however, since this, for lack of a better term, I call it the DSI review, is not technically required under the bylaw, we don't believe there's any, anything that would stop the board from proceeding forward with this application this evening. Again, the site plan showed the structures, driveway, parking, landscaping, screening and drainage, floor plans and building elevations were filed. In looking at the trip memorandum provided by Howard Stein Hudson, what they found was that it would generate approximately two vehicle trips every five minutes on the adjacent roadway network during the peak afternoon hour, which is really not a significant traffic increase in that particular area. The other issue that comes up with a DSI review is a financial impact study, and we don't believe in this case that it would, should be required in any event. Again, this type of operation is unique. One of the things that is required for him, for Zach to be here this evening, is he has a host agreement already signed with the selectmen of the town. And what that host agreement requires is that he pay to the town 3% of the gross sales from the marijuana products. What that agreement specifically says is that there may be certainly impacts to various town departments, agencies, police, fire, and the like, so that the fee is being paid to mitigate the financial impact of this business on the town, including its roads, infrastructure, law enforcement, fire protection services, inspectional services, and consulting services. So again, the financial impact of this business on the town has already been taken into account, has been agreed to between the selectmen and Zach, and will require, unlike most other retail businesses, that he pay to the town of Wellfleet, not to the state but to the town, 3% of the gross sales of his business. So again, the financial impact to the town, we believe, will be, if anything, beneficial and not negative. So that having been said, I can turn it over to Zach, and if you want to introduce the engineer, make more of a presentation.
Sure. I was going to set up a board. Is this a good spot?
That's fine.
Very thorough. I'm not sure you left me with much to talk about, but...
The site is 20,000 square feet, about a half an acre. Sorry. I'll talk about the circulation. The entrance is over here. I'm sorry, this is Route 6, this is Main Street.
Maybe if you could swing it so the audience can see it too.
Yeah, just put it over there. We actually have it, so...
We have the drawing.
So...
Easy to follow. We've all walked the site.
You need it over there with the camera?
Yeah.
Yeah, over there might work better.
Yeah. That's good.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. We can follow on our drawing.
Yeah.
I'll keep moving it just a little.
The other way.
Little bit.
The other way.
Thank you.
Bravo.
Okay. So the site, I'll talk about circulation first. This is the entrance to the site. The circulation is around the building, and this is the exit to the site. If you're familiar with the existing bank building, there was a drive-through here which allowed you to circulate around the building, and that is going away with this site plan. There's parking around the perimeter of the site, and then there's some spaces closer to the building. One of the benefits here is we're adding specific ADA spaces near the building with ramping that goes up to the new decking that's around the building. The site was not ADA compliant as it is today, so that's one benefit. The decking, I think Zach will talk more about it, but it's all going to be replaced around the building, and there'll be new stairs and ramps and whatnot. For landscaping, as I said, the drive-through area will be closed off and filled in with landscaping, so that's kind of an improvement in reducing the impervious area. Along with that, the Conservation Commission requested some native plantings along this edge of the parking lot, which is the top of a bank, of a stream. So there'll be native species planted along here for their request. The loading is over here, so trucks would enter here, circulate around the site, and then back in, and then leave this way, so that they're really out of the way of the parking lot, and it works pretty well. I was going to just speak briefly about drainage. We are reducing impervious areas, so there's really no need to add any drainage, but per the Conservation Commission's request, we are going to infiltrate the first half-inch of runoff off of the building through three drywells located around the building, so that's another benefit of the development. I think that's all I had. There is lighting around the perimeter of the building. It would be something similar to the lighting at the bank across the street, in keeping with the, kind of, the neighborhood feel there. I think that's all I have, if you want to...
So the architect couldn't be with us today, so, but I've spent many hours with him, so I think, feel comfortable going through the floor plan with everybody. So this is, this would be where the drive-through was, if you can picture that, and then the main street is here, and you enter through here, and a lot of your parking, there's five spaces. Try to ignore this. These are the second floor, which is just for storage right now. right now. Everyone would enter through a, a single step where the decking is, and between the two buildings, there's a, a small auxiliary building, and they would walk straight ahead to a new entrance, and you would enter, in the high season at least, and maybe all year round, there would be someone checking IDs to make sure that anyone who enters is twenty-one years old. If we are able to become medical right now, it's not permitted in the zoning, but someone under twenty-one who's a registered patient could also enter, but that's not a topic for today. They would check in at a reception desk, which could, could also be where their ID is checked in the slow season, I'd imagine. And there's a waiting room and ADA bathroom. It's also shared with the employees, being able to enter from this employee-only area. And once they're checked in, they'll have their ID taken, and a, a sales representative will come out and escort them into the sales floor. And that's that, where the, really, the bank was set up exactly the same way with the tellers here, if anyone remembers. And they will, there's, they could step into this area here and have a consultation, or purchase their product. There'll be kind of like jewelry cases where things are displayed, but most of the product will be behind them here and distributed out on the counter according to what they want. There's strict limits on how much you can buy, so it's very small amounts, right now it's, it's an ounce per visit. There's a secure vault with steel reinforced walls where the other, the rest of the product is held, so when the jars start to run out here, only certain personnel can access this vault and will bring the product to the sales representatives. Other than that, there's just a break room there, and it's important to note that there, you can see that there's two doors, and Eddie will talk a little bit more about this, there's two secure doors on either end for security to enter where the dispensing is happening. Another important thing to note is that these, these windows, we, we, we put in historic, you know, split pane windows to match the look of the old house and kind of restore that feeling to the property, but there's a state regulation where you, you can't see any product, you know, you have to hide it. So we're gonna have frosted glass on these windows or anywhere that product could be seen, but from the outside it will just look like a, an old, an old historic home. I think that's, that's it for the, for the layout. I wanna turn it over to Eddie Dominguez, he's the director of security for the company, and tell you about himself and what we plan on doing for security.
Good evening, thank you for having us here tonight. My name's Eddie Dominguez, I'm a retired Boston police detective. I have served as a Boston police detective for twenty-nine years, the last eleven assigned to an FBI drug task force. Most of my twenty-nine years were spent investigating narcotics. I was an undercover officer for a long period of time. When I retired from law enforcement, I joined Major League Baseball as a security consultant, and then as an investigator for six years. As a security consultant, I helped set up security for stadiums all over the United States, as well as places like Venezuela, Cuba, and other places in Latin America. I took part in overseeing the security, it's implemented at Fenway Park now. Over the last couple of years, I've taken part and become a security consultant for dispensaries such as this. One of the things that I think is the most important as far as setting up security anywhere, whether it be in Venezuela or Fenway Park, is setting up a dialogue with law enforcement, and we have done that. We have gone to the Wellfleet Police Department, spoken to the chief and the lieutenant, and we have given him our plans, the whole set of plans, and they, they have seen them. We're also, the other thing that I think is very important, Boston Police was one of the original police departments that put into place community policing, and we think that works extremely well. I don't think any place can be secure unless everybody's involved with the security, and we want feedback from our neighbors, and we will be speaking to them and explaining to them what it is that our security measures are going to be. As the attorney said earlier, the security measures are very stringent, they're set by the Cannabis Control Committee, and they are incredibly good, and we will adhere to them and in many cases exceed what it is that it's required of us as far as security. We will have security video cameras all over the premise, which will give the Wellfleet Police Department access to if they want it. If not, we will have recording that will be kept for ninety days, and they can have access to that anytime they want. We have, will have two alarm systems, and the reason for having two alarm systems is that sometimes an alarm system fails. They'll be run by different companies, so if one alarm fails, the other one hopefully will still be active. We'll also have backup power systems in case of power failure, so that, you know, we can keep it going for a period of time. Everybody that works there will be receiving training from myself, not only the security staff, but the, the entire staff, as far as things to see, you know, the same, if you see something, say something, that will be also said to all our customers. One of the things that we intend to do is when our customers first come in and they register, we're gonna have them read and sign a contract with us. And the contract basically is gonna tell them how we expect them to act, not only inside the premise but outside the premise. Not only will the police department obviously be called if there's something that's, that they're doing wrong, but if we get wind from any of the neighbors, we have a plate number or we have a description of the individual, we'll be able to tell them the video cameras, and they will be immediately barred from coming into the premise. The security system, the way it's set up is, you know, it's ideal that this were taken over a bank, because you wouldn't see this kind of security system in most banks, to be honest with you. That's how tight it is and how stringent the rules are. We intend to, as far as the, the locking systems inside here, you won't be able to open both doors at the same time. That's in case, sometimes if somebody will open a door and there'll be a rush in, you know, they've scheduled robbery or something like that. That won't happen in a place like this, we won't, we won't allow it. Other than that, I'll take questions later on, if you have.
Eddie?
Eddie, just, do you wanna just speak about the delivery and money?
Yeah, the delivery system, as well as the pickup of, of the money, at the end of the day, we'll, we'll get, have a company come and, and pick up the cash at the end of the day. The deliveries will be coordinated from where it's picked up all the way back to the office. They will have GPS devices inside the, the cargo van, and they will be tracked all the way. Once they get near our place of business, they will contact us, and they will stay inside the van until one of our security personnel meets them by the door where they're gonna make the delivery. At no time will they be able, will they be allowed to get out of the car until that security personnel is outside and helps them bring it in. The deliveries will, will not always be at the same time for security reasons, we'll schedule them at different times to make sure that if somebody's watching us, they won't be able to set up to take off the, the van when it comes in.
So I, I wrote a, a small statement, just so I don't forget, for, in closing, I would like to remind the board and the public that I am proposing to restore and revitalize a vacant property, to create a business designed to serve a documented local need, and likely to create good local jobs. My business plan is considerate to our sensitive coastal environment, my neighbors and the town. No product or customers will be visible from the exterior of the building that I've designed with the utmost respect to its historic character. There will be no neon lights nor any other bright signage. No odors nor loud noises would be produced. Neither loitering nor public use of our products would be tolerated, and I intend to support local educational programs to combat teen drug use and abuse of more dangerous drugs.
Thank you. Is there anyone?
This is my Etsy application, and certainly we'll try to answer any questions the board or public may have.
Okay, I think I'll ask the public first, if there's anyone who wants to speak to this issue before we go to letters. Nope, hearing none, you have letters.
I have letters. All right. This'll take a few minutes, Madam Chairman.
To take, yes, I know, you have a few letters.
Okay, this is from, and if I mispronounce names, I'm apologizing in advance. I'm not gonna do it for every letter, but I hope everyone understands. This is from Rodolfo Machado, he's a professor of architecture and urban design emeritus from Harvard. I am writing to oppose the application for a special permit for retail marijuana sales at ten Main Street. In principle, I do not oppose the opening of such a shop in town. I am opposed to the chosen location at the main entrance in Wellfleet. As in a butter, I am concerned about two issues. One, more importantly, the traffic congestion the shop will produce in an already overused entrance to town, which are, by the way, trying to improve, there is a contradiction there, trying to alleviate and improve traffic while attracting by far more traffic to it. A matter of perception, what does it mean for the town's image to have a marijuana shop as its first shop one sees upon arrival? Usually such a shop will be located in downtown or at its margins and not at the gate-like site. A letter dated June eighth from Nancy E. Cook at thirty Main Street. At first, I was shocked by the thought that a marijuana shop wanted to be my neighbor. However, now that I realize that marijuana will be in Wellfleet and I have met Zachary Mint, I can think of no better person to be my neighbor. Sounds like Mr. Rogers. Zachary's plan to renovate and care for the historic building at ten Main Street will make him a good neighbor. I believe this renovation is important for the whole town since the property sits at the entrance of Main Street. He and his wife know and respect our historical Wellfleet. As someone who grew up in Wellfleet and whose family has been here for generations, this is a comfort to me. Zachary seems to be a fine ethical person with a good business background and experience. He has met with my family several times. We have drawn up a neighbor agreement with a lawyer. I wish him success in his business venture and hopes for the future. A letter from Brian Scally, dated June second. I am writing to express my support of granting a special permit for the old bank LLC to, to sell retail cannabis. The proposal will not only benefit the town by providing a safe and controlled access to a product already widely used, but will provide the town with much-needed local employment opportunities and additional tax revenues. The proposed site is a good choice because, one, it is not displacing any existing businesses; two, it already has plenty of onsite parking; three, its proximity to Route Six means it will not cause any additional congestion in town during the high season. The plans for the exterior of the building, the plans for the exterior of the building is discreet and respectful to the historic nature of the town, and the site's proximity to a traffic signal will make backups or a safety hazard from cars entering and exiting less of a concern than at other proposed sites around town. A letter from Susan Seibert, dated June second. My husband Bart Mitchell and I have resided in the Jamaica Plain neighborhood of Boston for over thirty years, and have owned a house in Truro for over fifteen years. I love Wellfleet too, and looked there as well to buy a home long ago. I practice law with a firm in downtown Boston. Okay, I'll get through the pedigree, okay. I am writing to recommend Zachary Mint to you. I understand that he has applied for a retail license to sell cannabis in Wellfleet. We have known him for over eight years as our neighbor in Truro, and he's a wonderful, honest, hardworking and intelligent man who will do a great job if you chose to grant him a license. Frankly, as someone who grew up in a very small town, I would much rather see a local person who knows and loves the outer cape to be granted such a license than a large corporation which may take the profits, not give individualized attention to a specific town, and not give back to the community. I cannot say enough good things about Zach. He is full of integrity, smarts and strong work ethic, and you'll be thrilled at the result if you choose him. Fire Chief Paulie wrote on June tenth. On this date, I met with Mr. Zach Mint to discuss and review the proposed change of use for ten Main Street. This meeting included a brief discussion of the business model, proposed business, building renovations, site access, vehicle ingress and ingress, parking and an overall plan review. In addition, Captain Joseph Capello and I then did a site visit, inclusive of existing conditions, walkthrough and site review. Please be advised, at this time, the fire department has no specific concerns or objections to the proposal to change the use of the building from office use to retail sales of marijuana or for any proposed change in parking spaces. As always, should you have any questions or need additional information, please contact me. We're getting there, Madam Chairman. A letter from Kevin Rice, June eleventh. I am writing in support of Zachary Mint seeking approval of a dispensary in Wellfleet. The dispensary will add to the dynamic of the Wellfleet business community, not least because there remains a positive aura around the old CCB and T Bank, an institution that helped many local businesses. As a resident of Wellfleet for thirty-seven years, and as chairman of the Wellfleet-Truro Housing Partnership from eighty-seven to ninety-two, I can say with certainty that Zachary and his enterprise will be a positive addition to the community I have come to know and love so well. I have known Zachary and his entire family for four years, primarily my capacity as executive artistic director of Payamet Performing Arts Center in Truro. In that time, I have seen Zachary in many personal and professional situations where he has always conducted himself responsibly and comported himself to the highest standards of conduct and ethics. He is a straight-up solid young entrepreneur. Were I twenty years younger, I would want to work for Zachary. I have nothing but the highest praise to this young man, and I can only hope that you and the zoning board will give him every consideration. Alex Tillett, six thirteen nineteen. I would like to express my support for the application before you regarding the old bank dispensary proposal at ten Main. I have run a successful small business in various locations around Wellfleet for the last four years, and will consider myself, and would consider myself a neighboring business to the proposed dispensary. I believe that this is a good location for a dispensary in Wellfleet for many reasons, one of which is that it will provide much-needed year-round employment and may extend the season thereby supporting other small local businesses. I know Zachary Mint, the old bank's founder, very well and often discussed business with him. I have no doubt that if permitted, he will run a successful business to the benefit of all of Wellfleet. I think this may be a duplicate, I already read one from Kevin Rice, right?
Yes, you did.
So, that's it.
Good, thank you very much. All right, all right. Questions?
I had, I had a question for the.
Yes.
I have a question for the engineer. I know you only need seven parking spaces, and you said that there would be fourteen.
Yes.
Could you just show us on the board?
Sure.
Where they actually are, like one by one?
There's five right here, one, two, three, four, five. There's four here, one, two, three, four, three, one, two, three, and then there's two here, one, two.
Okay. And those two are the handicapped ones?
Correct.
The two that's closest to the line.
Excellent. That's my question.
Thanks.
My questions of a traffic nature. High peak period, it's hard to get in and out of Wellfleet in the summer, will you have a designated parking attendant? Because if you have two or three cars wanting to go into your business and they take a left on six, that can block the traffic real quickly, as we've all experienced from living here. So are you gonna have a, a traffic attendant, so if the lot starts to fill, you can just wave them down into town and not have a traffic jam?
Yeah, actually, I'm glad you brought that up, because we failed to mention an important aspect of our plan to mitigate, the traffic study that you see in section five is for a mature industry. So right now, this is a new thing, and I understand that if, if I'm to be the first, it could be, there could be a lot of excitement in traffic.
Gold rush, right?
Right. So we, we all hope that happens, but we don't want it to, we don't wanna create a backlash. The last thing I want is, is. The last thing I want is something that's negative for the town. So, the direct answer to your question is yes. We'll have a parking guard, probably have a full-time parking guard there anyways during the summer, just to help people park because it's going to be a shell driveway and just to direct people into the right spots. But also, if it becomes unmanageable and the lot is consistently full, I don't want to direct people into town. So, we will move to an appointment-only system and let everybody know with a sign and not let anybody in.
Gotcha.
Unless they have an appointment, and then they can come in and park. And they will have a online or by telephone or application to make those appointments.
Nice one. Now, the other question I have, the licensing process, how far along are you on in that? Or when do you expect to open this place? Or are you just waiting for the state?
Everything goes well tonight. It's the... As if you saw the site, I don't know if you did a site visit, but the building's not in the best shape. So, my... The longest delay is going to be getting the building in the kind of shape that it needs to be in.
How about the licensing from the state?
So, the licensing from the state. I've put my application into the state, and they generally take around thirty days to deem the application complete. So, they're now going... I'm on a list. When they get to it, they're all backed up. They'll tell me if it's complete or not. If I'm missing things, I'll have to go get them. Once that's determined, maybe thirty, sixty or thirty days, I'm hoping less, but then they have ninety days, um, to review the actual application and go through my standard operating procedures, all of our background checks. We get fingerprinted, and then we're given a provisional certificate. So, that's not... You're not done yet. Then you have to submit your architectural drawings to the Cannabis Control Commission, and they take another thirty days to review those and possibly approve them. If there's an issue, they go back to you, and they have another thirty days. Once that happens, um... Let's see what's next after that. Well, then they'll do it, and then you apply for your inspection. So, once you've had, uh, your architectural review, you can go apply for your building permit and build it out, and then you do final inspections. And then there they inspect your... From your alarms to your training procedures to your record-keeping, seed-to-sale tracking. So, they use, um, the blockchain technology to track every plant from its seed to the customer. So, they'll test all of those systems, and if you pass that test, then you would be approved to open. So, it's quite a process. My base case timeline is May or June of next year.
Okay. So, we're a year out. That was... That's all I got. Thank you.
Oh, that would have been an easy answer.
That's basically what I have.
Whatever you want to do.
You can go ahead.
That's why you get the big bucks.
I'll go the other direction. Well...
In terms of opening year-round, uh, would you be willing to accept a condition of our approval, that it be open all year round? I... Other than I ask, in terms of restaurants, they always open and say, "Oh, we're going to be open all year round." About February fifteenth, they're closed.
Yeah. I'm inclined to say yes because my plan is to be open year-round, and I believe that there is a strong enough demand in this area to support this business. And I did a lot of work with my architect, um, to design a store that, uh, can be used with smaller volume. So, during the winter, for example, when we talked about all of the traffic flow into the parking lot as well as into the building, you wouldn't need to do the whole come-in-one entrance, leave-the-other entrance in February. You could just come in, get your product at that security desk, and then go back out the same door. So, we could try to close down part of the area. So, I really... The answer is, it's my true intention to stay open year-round, but I wouldn't want to put the condition on it necessarily. If business conditions change, it may or may not be feasible.
That's fair enough. Trevor?
What's your plan for the smaller accessory building there? And what are you planning to do on the second floor at this time?
So, the accessory building, I hope would... I could sublet to a... Another retail store, um, something complimentary, maybe other health products, um, things like that.
So, you're leasing that as well, then?
Well, not right now because, again, if this is a rollout and it's... And we need the extra parking and we need the extra space, uh, we would want to just kind of let that either be, you know, an area for employees to maybe employee training or, you know, I haven't really... Or storage. I haven't really, um, thought that completely through, but I think that as things calm down, and there's a couple stores in each town, that it would make sense to let that be another use. That's...
Right. And if you wanted... At this point, if you wanted to include it in the business, you'd... That would all have to be... To go through the state-controlled board anyway, right? Yeah.
And I think the other thing is if the plan in the future ever were to locate another retail business, it would require coming back to this board again for another special permit. So, there would be oversight on that.
Right.
And then as far as the upstairs, um, that is, right now, marked as storage, again, because this is... There won't be part... Either way, it won't be part of this business.
What kind of signage are you planning?
So, the Cannabis Control Commission, as well as Wellfleet, have fairly strict signage rules. You can see in the rendering, it's small, but it's on the cover of your application. A... I think it's about two-by-eight-foot sign above the gable end of the addition with some small barn lights lighting it up, and it will just have the name, "The Old Bank Dispensary." So, I plan to stay well within, uh, Wellfleet's sign laws, and it brings up a larger point that if you're not a customer, if you're not someone who's using this, what you'll see is a historic home. You're... It won't... There's... The restrictions from the state level are no neon, no bright signs, uh, things like that, and then Wellfleet has their own that I'll adhere to as well.
Now you get your time. Yeah.
Just to... This is more a comment. I mean, this is not a project of significant impact under the zoning bylaw, so, uh... And it's rare that our board and the planning board agree on the time of day, and we all agree on that. So, uh, don't disrupt that. But I appreciate your, you know, conservative approach to this. I'm more... Just curious about a legal issue. Do you also need a business license from the Board of Selectmen in addition to the agreement that was signed?
Well, they would... At this point in time, I'm... I don't believe that the Selectmen have adopted any specific licensing yet for marijuana establishments. I believe it's probably going to be in the works. I know Provincetown is looking into it. Right now, they would... As far as I know, there'd be no license other than any other retail establishment would have to obtain. I suspect, however, I would not be at all surprised if, in the near future, that the Selectmen consider some kind of special licensing for this, as most towns that are allowing them are also addressing it on the licensing end.
I was just more curious because I thought the state might have preempted that through their licensing, and it's not a... You also mentioned that they're going to limit it to three. My sense is that there's a... It's a work in progress, and I'm trying to put it in the most kind way that I can. And I thank you, by the way, for cleaning up all the typos on the agreement. There seemed to be challenge on the other side of the table, getting an agreement without typos, but you did it, so congratulations. Yours is a cash business completely?
Well, right now, it would have to be. So, I... I've, uh...
This, I'm just curious.
No, no. Well, I have a relationship with a... There's one large bank and two small, um, two smaller banks in Massachusetts that can bank. It's a misunderstanding that banks can't bank these businesses because it's illegal federally, which it is. It's that there's compliance and regulation costs. And so, this one bank, Century Bank, has a large compliance office because they do a lot of overseas transfers. And so, I have a relationship with them, and what they have told me is they can't bank us yet. They do bank for medical marijuana, and they're working on it, and they think that, according to my timeline, that they should have banking set up. But we have a contingency. Uh, if you've been to the Boulangerie, you've seen their cash machines actually are the cash machines of choice for these businesses. So, uh, the agent... The dispensary agents wouldn't be touching the cash and wouldn't be able to hand it over to a would-be burglar. They go directly into it, a reverse ATM, so to speak, and it's completely locked up.
I was just sort of interested in it. You're our first, so I'm just trying to learn a few things.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And I... To your question about the licensing, I was under the impression, I just assumed, that I would have to come back to the Select Board for a business license like any other business. But during my, um, my time with the Select Board, at one of the meetings, I learned that their opinion was, I think from legal counsel, that the host agreement would become the license if I was permitted by the state. I'm open to either one, but that's just with...
That's not my bailiwick. I sensed a great deal of confusion there. That's as far as I'll go.
It's new. It's to be expected. It's new, and even the state Cannabis Control Commission is continually changing their guidance on this, so it's...
It's like a moving target.
It's not their fault.
It really is. I was very interested when I was looking at the background of all of this. When recreational marijuana was legitimized or decriminalized in Massachusetts, I think it won by fifty-three percent, which is a really healthy margin in politics. From Orleans up to the bridges, it was defeated, as you probably know better than me. From Wellfleet down to Provincetown, it passed, and Wellfleet voted sixty-eight percent in favor of it. And, uh, I know some folks are concerned about where it goes, but I don't know where the sixty-eight percent felt it was going to go. It has to go someplace. So, uh, and they were... You know, town meeting rejected the idea of putting recreational marijuana in a marijuana overlay district. So, you're in the right district. And frankly, I guess I disagree. One of the authors here, I mean, where you're located in the central district is a little better than downtown, which essentially is narrower roads, which generally become one-lane roads when the three buses come into town and the trucks, but that's neither here nor there. I mean, you're... To me, you're like a T-shirt shop that has a lot of state regulation, that's all. You're just a regular retail business, and I don't see any problem with it to get to the bottom line.
I've got one more question, if you'd...
Sure.
If the board can indulge me. It's actually for their, uh, yes, detective. Having been on the front line of the war on narcotics or something, when did you have your moment of your road to Damascus or your conversion? Because I think it's important for people to understand, those that are against the marijuana or whatever, to hear from a police officer who was in that industry for twenty years on one side or the other. So, if you could just... I'd really like to hear your opinion of it, if you don't mind.
Well, my opinion of it and my thoughts on it are going to be a little different than you'd hear from any other law enforcement, I believe. Because I spent, like I said, twenty-three out of my twenty-nine years arresting, doing undercover work with narcotics, and I never smoked pot, I never took any drugs. I was always against it. So, as life is, sometimes the unexpected happens. Well, I was diagnosed with pancreatic cancer back in two thousand and fourteen. I'm very lucky to be here. They caught it early enough where I had the only surgery that you can have is a Whipple surgery. As a result of that, my wife, at the time when I first got diagnosed, went crazy looking at every possible way that we could get rid of this disease. And she read up on everything. It had me going to witch doctors and everything else. She did try to do everything to keep me alive. One of the things she read is this stuff that's called Rick Simpson Oil. It comes from marijuana. It's a combination. It's not high on THC, but you take it. And I'm here. I can't tell you that's the reason why I'm here, but I'm here. And my wife insists that I still take it. I take it every night, just a little dab of it. I wear my pancreatic cancer bracelet. As a matter of fact, I'm going to Washington, DC in two weeks to March and see if we can get some more money for research. So, that's how I got involved in this.
Thank you so much. I'm really glad to hear that tonight. That's awesome. Thank you.
Well, I have one more question.
I have one.
I'm just sort of interested. I don't want to probe into your business, you know, I believe, but how much... I was going to ask you how much money you think you'll generate for the town, but, you know, where the rubber meets the road on the concern about traffic is whether the town will take what I think will be a lot of money, gross sales of different marijuana establishments, and use them... Use that money not for general municipal purposes, but to take care of whatever traffic issues and other things to develop. And, you know, I would encourage folks who raise concerns to bring that to the Board of Selectmen, because they're the ones who can control whether there's a problem or not, because they're going to get the money. They're going to have the money to fix whatever road problems exist, and if they don't spend it, then, you know, we'll all suffer. I live in the center of town, and, you know, if I can't get out, so, you know, that's the way it is. I can't help it. But the money's going to be here to take care of any problems, and I think it's up to the Board of Selectmen to make sure it gets spent that way and not get absorbed into general municipal expenses. But that's just my personal opinion.
The one comment, if I may, that I'd make to that is that there is an interesting debate going on. Some municipalities have asked for a lot. The way they came up with three percent is that municipalities use the power of being able to require this host agreement to extort, uh, large amounts from these companies. And the state came up with guidance that three percent could be charged, and that was what they considered to be reasonable. But it also had to make sense in that it had to offset actual costs or potential costs to these businesses existing in the town. So, that does mean road infrastructure or better traffic management, as well as, you know, I had a conversation with Chief Paulie, and we said, you know, there is an uptick since this became legalized in calls. And he said, "That's not a bad thing. It means people are calling for help maybe instead of the police. They're not scared anymore because people get a hold of it or whatever and get... They eat too much and get scared, and they call the ambulance, which is good." So, there is a little bit of extra cost to that, and I'm aware of that. So, that's what it's really meant to offset, and I hope... Hopefully, it does.
Thank you.
And I have rather mundane questions. The hours of operation?
We're proposing to be ten AM to eight PM.
Okay. And your lighting will follow all zoning laws, so you won't be putting...
So, all dark-sky compliant. You know, I should say that we plan on having solar panels on the roof, using high-efficiency lighting, and the cameras that we've been working, uh, looking at with Eddie can see in absolute darkness. But we will have, I think, one candlelight is what we were looking at. So, just enough to have some light on every corner of the parking lot, but not all our beautiful stars.
Sure. And in the parking study, it refers to the other retail tenant. That is the accessory building person?
Yeah. That was, uh, "She sells seashells" last year.
Yeah.
So, I think that that's still zoned that way because it's been pretty recent.
Yeah. Okay. All right. That's all I have. All right. So...
Madam Chair, if I could ask just a few questions?
I hear you. Thank you. I know we've talked about the provision, the development of significant impact and the fourteen parking spaces versus the seven. Maybe it's me. Maybe I'm a little challenged with the math, but I'm still trying to figure out how we or how you've arrived at only needing seven parking spaces. Could somebody just walk through that? Because if we're looking at a two-thousand-square-foot building, that's excluding the three-hundred-sixty-square-foot auxiliary building, and if you need one parking space per one-hundred-fifty square feet, I'm coming up with a number that is higher than seven parking spaces. So, I want to make sure before we dismiss a provision of the bylaw as not being applicable that we understand why we're doing that.
Well, I can give... I did a little bit of arithmetic today. First of all, you have to remember, the two-thousand square feet is the whole building, and we're only talking about the first floor being involved in this.
Okay.
And obviously, areas like the safe, like the break room for the employees, that's really not retail area. I looked at... When you look at the area, the square footage of the waiting room, the dispensary, the exit area, the consultation room, even the restroom, I still came up with about seven-hundred the exit area, the consultation room, even the restroom, I still came up with about 700 square feet of actual retail area, which at 150, you're looking at that point at, what is it? Four or five spaces maximum being required, and then three for the employees. So, you're still in the seven to eight range as opposed to anything 10 or more.
Okay, so what was that number again? Do you mind?
Sure. Do you need the, well, I came up with 691 square feet of retail area, waiting room of 166, the dispensary of 345 square feet.
Excuse me, could you just go through that one more time?
Sure, okay. Again, the waiting room, square footage of 166. The dispensary, the area where it's actually the sales will take place, 345 square feet. The exit area right off of the dispensary is 32 square feet. The consultation room next to the dispensary is 77 square feet, and the restroom is 71 square feet. So, I didn't count the safe, I didn't count the employee break room, that type of thing. These are the actual retail areas. So, I came up with 691 square feet. So, you're looking at five spaces there, and with the employees, a maximum of eight, that would be three spaces required. So, you're looking at eight spaces maximum.
I think you said seven in here.
Well, so, yeah.
I can just explain the discrepancy. I calculated a little differently than him. And the dispensary, he took the whole dispensing area as retail space, but I just took the retail floor, so there's a counter, and people aren't allowed past the counter. So, that splits that room, takes about a third of that room off and drops you down. But I think we're talking about seven or eight here, not nine or 10 or 11.
Well, I don't want to put too fine of a point on it, but it doesn't, under parking requirements for retail business, it doesn't say to use the square foot area for sales. It says to use the square foot of floor area for the business. So, I disagree with the way you did the calculations. That being said, if you take the whole 1,000 square feet, you still only end up with needing seven spaces. So, it's sort of a moot point, I suppose. I think they have enough parking anyway.
Yeah.
Regardless of how you calculate it.
It's not really a question for the amount of parking, because they've got plenty of parking. It's a question of whether it triggered a planning board review. The planning board informally told us that it did not, so...
Madam Chair, I just have, so if you open up a business in that, you know, the, whatever the lady was that...
Seashells or whatever.
She sells. What about parking for that or parking for whatever you do upstairs?
They'd have to come back.
They'd have to come back.
Come back, and we'd have to make sure there was enough parking to support that additional business.
Right. And they'd have to get the additional use.
I didn't ask you guys, I asked them.
We'd have to come back.
He actually said it earlier on, as the record will show.
Could I ask one more question, too?
Of course.
Do we have some information about the size of the trucks making the deliveries?
Yeah, they can't be, I don't have the exact number, maybe Eddie knows, but it can't be trucks, they're actually small Sprinter vans. They have to be unmarked with randomized delivery times. So, it's pretty inconspicuous.
And you plan on using, what's the former drive-through, sort of the loading dock area, right?
Well, no, what the, actually, the front door that you see there would be the loading area. So, the drive-through's gone.
Right, right. So, you remove that, and that in its place...
So, that would be landscaping would come out in front of that, even though that's not in the rendering. And so, we would keep just a portion so that a truck could back in as a parking space. I think Mark could point to it there.
And that's the door you were looking at, there?
So, they would just walk it in, they would back in, walk it in, or walk it out, whatever it may be, and then head out of the exit-only area. That way, they're not blocking the exit for anybody, so it could happen at any time during the day. And they have a quick escape route. And also, the fact that it's in the front of the building in plain sight is actually a positive, I learned from Eddie, for security.
Okay, thank you.
That actually brings up the other question of the hours of delivery are not going to be other than the hours of operation. Not coming in at 2:00 in the morning with a delivery.
You'd rather not say?
No, not at 2:00 AM, no.
Yes. Okay. Do you have other questions, Madam?
No, thank you.
All right.
Procedurally, as far as we're, how we...
How do we proceed?
...handle this, they're applying just for a retail business.
Right.
And from a zoning perspective, it shouldn't be any different whether they're selling T-shirts or coffee mugs or marijuana. That being said, I think everyone knows, they freely admitted they're selling marijuana. I think we should, if we decide to move to findings, really go through Section 8.4.2 and make specific findings to every single section that we're supposed to make findings for. And I might suggest that we have town council help us write some findings for every single section.
Right.
And...
That is why she's here.
Yes, and so...
I'm suggesting we do that. Why don't we just, why don't we just vote in favor of the license, let Ms. Murray go back and fill in all the blanks, and then give it to us next week?
That's fine, too. Or we, or, yeah.
I mean, that's, I'm not trying to slow your process down, but we could be here for an hour.
No, I wasn't proposing that we go through them all tonight. I was proposing that we, where I was going with this was that we would continue it and have the town council come back with draft findings for every section.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood, I apologize.
And then that we would vote on them at our next meeting.
Are you good with that, Mr. Murphy?
Ms. Murray, would you suggest that we close the hearing, vote on whether we're in favor of the permit or not, and then you come back with the detailed findings?
Well, we can't vote on whether we're in favor of the permit till we've read the findings.
Yeah, we've got to have a continuance come back.
We have to know what the findings are before we vote on the permit.
Never saw Karnak, did I give listen Johnny Carson? He did the answer before the question.
Yes, what is...
It's typically not my practice to presume how you're going to vote, so you could certainly close the public hearing tonight. There hasn't been much public comment, but if you wanted to make one more pass at it, you could certainly close the public hearing, and then I could prepare draft findings and a couple of conditions that I think have been discussed tonight, and bring that back at your next meeting. And maybe it's also, I forget the, what do we just do with the habitat? Is that the 11th?
July 11th.
July 11th, if that's a good day for everyone.
Yeah, we'll have a good day, yeah. Is that all right with you?
Certainly. Obviously, the timeframe, we're looking at the sooner the better, and we understand that it's got, has to be done properly, and it's the first one for everybody, so.
For sure.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
So...
Yes, thank you. So, we are, are we going to continue the hearing or are we going to close the public hearing?
We should continue.
We're going to close the public hearing, but then we're going to continue to continue it to the next meeting.
Regular hearing, yes. Okay, so, I need a motion first to close the...
I so moved to close the public hearing.
Second, all in favor? And then I need a motion to continue to July 11.
I will make a motion to continue the hearing till July 11.
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor? Bye. Thank you very much, John.
It's a brave new world.
Thank you, thank you, Madam.
Thank you all.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Now, we have Rispoli Ventures, and now...
Town council is free to leave at this point, correct?
Town council is free to leave at this point.
Should we take a two-minute break?
Thank you very much, Ms. Murray.
Actually, this is a good time to take a two-minute break. Town council, you may leave. Anyone else who wants to clear out of the building is fine. We are going on, however. So, two-minute break. I am now reopening, reopening the hearing so that we can hear 1909 Rispoli Ventures LLC.
Madam Chairperson, I will recuse myself from this hearing.
Oh, come on. Power.
The board for this hearing will be Mr. Drucker, Mr. Heiliger, myself, Mr. Ponchabriand, and Ms. Seody.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. For the record, my name is Liza Cox. I'm an attorney with Nutter McLennan and Fish and Hyannis, although I live here in Wellfleet, and my family owns the property that's the subject of this application. As many of you may know, PB Boulangerie Bistro is in its 10th anniversary this year in Wellfleet, which we're very proud of. This property is a labor of love for Philippe, who takes tremendous pride in his business, in the product, his presentation, and the aesthetic for the site. Those of you who are familiar with the site, and I think all of you are, know that he is really meticulous about every detail on this property, from the food to the service to the cleanliness, to the property itself, to the landscaping, and how the grounds are maintained. And he has a strong and definite vision for the business and the property, and has made significant investments within our community, the business, and the property. This zoning application represents his latest reinvestment and site amenity. He has a creative mind and is always thinking of new ways to improve, and this is consistent with that vision. He connected with a gentleman named Gilles Henterlin, who is a metal artist in France, to produce this piece of art, which is, I think, really an expression of his culture. So, what's proposed is an art installation. It's a replica of the Eiffel Tower. It is handmade in France. It's galvanized steel. The base is about 7.8 feet by about 7.8 feet. We did submit a diagram showing the measurements as part of the application. The height is just over 21 feet, so it complies with the height requirements of the zoning bylaw. I handed in a few minutes ago some photographs. The first photograph, which is this one, shows, this is the actual tower, it's sitting in pieces in my driveway around the corner right now. This is before it was painted. It is painted three colors. It's red on the base, white in the middle, and blue on the top. But this is the actual tower before it was shipped over from France and is now, as I said, sitting in my house. The second photograph is a simulation of what I suppose it could look like, showing the colors so that the board can see those as well. The location of the proposed installation is at the corner of the patio, off of the patio of the building. I think all of you were at the site visit, and so you saw where it was staked to be proposed. It is set back 100 feet from Route 6, so it complies to that setback, and no relief is needed from the Route 6 setback. The only reason that we're here at the zoning board is because it does not meet the setback off of Le Count Hollow Road. So, the installation is proposed approximately 27 feet off of Le Count Hollow Road frontage. I note that this property is already non-conforming to setbacks, including the Le Count Hollow Road setback. And in fact, the building already is even closer than where this installation is proposed. So, right now, at its closest point, the building is about 20 feet from the Le Count Hollow Road setback. This location was chosen because it fully complied with the setback off of Route 6, and it's almost entirely outside of the 100-foot buffer to the wetland off of the property. There's just a corner of the base of the proposed installation within the 100-foot buffer, but we did receive a negative request for determination from the Conservation Commission confirming that no notice of intent is required for the installation. So, Conservation has signed off on this. There is one residence that abuts the property further down on Le Count Hollow Road, and that would be buffered by the building, because that would be between where the installation is and that home. The purposes of our zoning bylaw are to promote the health, safety, welfare, convenience and, health, safety, convenience, and general welfare of the inhabitants, to lessen the danger of fire and congestion, and to improve the town under the provisions of Chapter 40A. This installation does not impact any or affect any of those purposes under the zoning bylaw. The property is not, is within a commercial zone, it's not within an historic district, it's not on Main Street. In addition, in evaluating a special permit, the board is guided by the bylaw to look at the criteria under Section 8.4.2, most of which I suggest for this type of accessory art installations not germane to the project. Namely, this is not a use of the land within the meaning of the zoning bylaw, and the use of the property, which is that of a restaurant and bakery/boulangerie, is not changing with this proposal. The proposal does not impact roads, drainage, or any public services. There are no environmental impacts associated with the installation. It's located already in an area that's disturbed and predominantly outside of the wetland buffer, and as I mentioned, Conservation has signed off on it. There is no water usage or septic flows associated with the installation, and it will have no impact on housing or seasonality, though I note that PB is one of the few establishments that's open virtually all year, all year long. Last year, we closed for about 40 days. I think this year, the idea is to try not to close at all. In addition, the installation doesn't impact parking, service areas, or shoreline access. And as I mentioned, in terms of visibility, it's in an area that's buffered from the one abutting residence. I also think if you consider where this property is and you drive down Route 6, which this property fronts on, you know, you see an enormous plastic shark hanging, you see hundreds of whirligigs spinning and inflatable floats of all colors and tastes that are tied to building facades and roofs. Right across the street from us, there's a large trailer where bikes are stored that has a significant amount of advertising on it. In the summertime, another restaurant down the street has a chicken dancing in front of it. And in town, there's another...
Manny's part-time job.
It's fun. I mean, I think, all of this, I think is...
And I love it.
Yeah, it's a fun expression, I think, of unique local businesses. And this is consistent with providing an amenity to this site. And so, you know, wrapping up, we're asking for the special permit relief from the setback. As I said, the site is already non-conforming to setback. This is not intensifying the nonconformity, it's actually going to be further back from the road than the building is presently from Le Count Hollow Road. And we think this is the best location on the site with the least amount of impact. And so, happy to try and answer any questions that the board may have.
And is there anyone from the audience who would like to speak to this case? And would you please go to the microphone?
Thank you very much. My wife and I, though we're not abutters within the 300-foot abutter zone for notice purposes, we're probably...
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, you need to identify yourself.
Sorry. My name is John Nealan. My wife and I own the property at 89 and 95 Le Count Hollow Road. Again, we're not within the 300-foot abutter notice zone. However, I think we're probably just outside it, being the third and fourth houses on the left towards the beach. When we first started coming to Wellfleet over 30 years ago, of course, we enjoyed the Clam Shack, which was the previous store where the bistro and bakery was. And then, for many, many years after the closing, a lot of you probably recall, the property was unused and oftentimes appeared neglected. And, you know, in many ways, for us, the bistro is the gateway to our street, Le Count Hollow Road, and heading up towards the beautiful beach that we have. And, you know, I would just like to make the comment for the record, and I speak for my wife as well, that since Philippe and his family have taken over the property, we've been impressed with the investment and the attention to detail with the development of the property. And as individuals who arguably will probably drive by the Eiffel Tower more than anyone else, arguably, we support the request because we know and we trust that it'll be done in good taste. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nealan. I believe there's someone else, Mr. Picard.
I'm on the mic.
He's got a mic.
I'm off the card. 10 years ago, approximately, it came to the planning board, so they're going to run a restaurant year-round. I sat there as a member, wished for luck, and expected to survive. They did. I think that, you know, what they're doing back to the community is huge with the year-round jobs. So, I mean, I don't know where this fits totally, but, you know, they have done a good job. And I really believed way back then they wouldn't be here. And they survived our winters. So, I mean, I think we give them that.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience? Yes. Go to the microphone. Please identify yourself.
My name's Michael Rose, and I live in South Wellfleet. We moved in 2010 after buying our property in 1995. My family vacationed throughout my childhood, which, as you can probably tell from looking at me, was several decades ago, when the Clam Shack was at its pinnacle. And I loved that Clam Shack. We had a tradition, going there first after we unpacked the car, arriving in Wellfleet. And I have to admit that... And I have to admit that after Alfred and the planning board heard PB was going to open as a very upscale French restaurant, I was adamantly opposed. I thought, this is not what the town of Wellfleet needs. We don't need a white tablecloth, year-round restaurant, a fancy bakery/boulogerie. That's what we leave behind when we leave the city. I didn't even go in for five years. I'm here in favor because if everybody in this community who owned a business or started a business could create the buzz and the excitement to even convert naysayers like me, the way Philippe Raspoli has succeeded, if everybody in this community would invest pretty close to $1 million in plant and equipment over a period of time, we wouldn't have some of the references that we've shared tonight in different matters to vacant buildings that are rundown. I should disclose that I now insure the business because when I started my insurance business locally, and Philippe heard about it, he sought me out and said, I'd like to support this business. He buys as much as he possibly can locally. Of course, he has to use suppliers from down Cape, but examples would be 100% of his shellfish are purchased from Richard Blakely across the street, and all of his pork and much of his other meat is purchased from Mooney's in Truro. There are multiple other examples. It is a beacon of a business. If that was not open year-round, where would we go for coffee in November and December?
Dunkin' Donuts.
It's, we have choices, but this is a great choice. I have one question for the applicant. Will the quality of the croissant be affected?
Not at all.
Not at all. And are the pain au chocolat addictive?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else want to do a testimony to chocolate before we go to the board?
I agree wholeheartedly with everything that everyone has said, and I love the boulogerie as much as everyone else has stated. I proposed to my wife in the boulogerie during a lovely dinner. So I, yes. That being said, to me, this meets every definition that we have of a sign. And if we read the definition of a sign quickly, it says that it's any display of lettering, logos, blah, 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 banners, objects, which is visible, it goes on, which is visible to any member of the public, which either conveys a message to the public or intends to advertise, direct, invite, announce, draw attention to, directly or indirectly, a use conducted on the premises. So I know you're calling it an art installation, but it would seem to me that if you're putting it in front of a business, the idea is to attract attention to the business, which is the very definition of a sign, and unfortunately, this does not meet the requirements of a sign. So I kind of get stuck at that point from a zoning point of view.
Go ahead. Yes?
I'll wait.
You'll wait. Okay.
I'm sorry. You want to do the chicken?
I'll wait, yeah.
Wait.
Will it be lighted at night? Is that the plan?
So there are some string lights that are embedded in the metal, and so I think the idea would be that those would be turned on at night. If the board wanted to put a condition that they be shut off by a certain time, you know, obviously, we're amenable to that.
Mr. Sullivan, I left you out there. Did you have-
No, I love the place, too. I do, but I'm not boating tonight, but it seems to meet the definition of a sign.
You know, I mean, I guess my response would be that there's no lettering on this. It's done by a handmade piece of art that's been done by a metal artist. You know, I don't know if the board considers every art installation to be signage, but this is, you know, this is a piece of art that was hand-commissioned and handmade to come to the site, that Philippe, again, is looking at it as an amenity to his property.
Yeah, I tend to agree that it would be beautiful there, and also that the building would block a lot of it, so you wouldn't see this humongous thing sitting there. But you're putting it there to attract people.
I mean, I think people are coming here. The idea of this is not, I think, to attract more customers. This is, and this probably sounds like a stretch, but for those of you who know Philippe, this is truly a piece of art that he thinks is going to be a beautiful amenity to his site. I don't think this is supposed to be some beacon to attract more people. It's just a part of his vision for the property.
Speak.
What?
Did you want to speak, sir?
Very interesting. I mean, I think it, you know, does meet the definition of a sign. It doesn't have to have lettering to be a sign. And, you know, all of us can speak extremely well of what Mr. Raspoli does there. I mean, it's one of the great restaurants. It's been in the New York Times even. That's not necessarily an endorsement if you're into the fake news school, but it's very interesting. Everyone who got up here, and I think they were great, talked about what a great person he is, giving to the community. Well, we take an oath to uphold the bylaw. We're not here awarding, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful, I think you know me well enough, not trying to award the man of the year. It's whether, of course, we take this oath to uphold the bylaw, and every now and then the bylaw bumps into something we'd all rather do. You know, we've given Mr. Raspoli, and it's been well deserved, and you've presented him, more special permits than any other business in town, and that's a tribute to his willingness to continue to invest. But, you know, if this is truly an art object, like a garden fountain, then you don't need a special permit.
The only reason that we need the special permit is because of the set. It's a structure under your bylaw.
Well, that's right. But, you know, you wouldn't be in here if you had, if it was like a two-foot garden fountain, or if it was a three-foot Eiffel Tower. You'd just put it in, and no one would do anything. I mean, it's Wellfleet. Unfortunately, it's a sign, and we take this oath to enforce the bylaw. Calling it an art object doesn't exempt it from being a sign. What Mr. Raspoli puts out in a plate, you could truly say is art, but it still doesn't exempt him from the health code requirements. I had an architect in, we had an architect in there once who described his building as a work of art. It really was, but it didn't exempt him from the zoning requirements. So, I mean, very reluctant not to like, I mean, I like this, but I'm very reluctant to say that I believe it is a sign as the bylaw is worded, and we don't write the bylaw. We don't input into it. We just try to apply it, and I just think it is a sign. It doesn't meet the requirements of a sign, unfortunately. And I'm sorry, apparently, there's been a substantial investment-
And it's, yeah, it's sitting in our house.
And you'd want it for Chloe on your yard, Jungle Jim. I know that.
It puts us in the position of deciding what's art, which we really can't be in the position of with the zoning board. We can't say, well, this one is big, and, but it's art, so it's okay. And then someone comes to us with a 21-foot lobster and says, but I had it designed and it's art. And we can't really go down that way because obviously, this, although it doesn't have any words, it does draw attention indirectly to a use conducted on the premises because it's a French restaurant. So we are, I mean, I think, I think you're hearing it from all of us. We love you, and we love the restaurant, but we have a sign bylaw.
Right. And so, I mean, perhaps one way to look at this is to seek relief from the provisions that it doesn't comply with under the sign bylaw. I think the setback would no longer be an issue. My understanding is that that setback does not apply to signs-
Right.
...just as here. So I'd have to look at which provisions of the sign bylaw the board feels don't comply, it doesn't comply with. And then, you do have the authority to grant relief from the zoning bylaw that is part of this board's authority under the zoning bylaw and under the zoning act. So it is still something that I think respectfully that the board could grant with its, under its authority under the bylaw.
I tend to agree, but would the applicant not need to reapply under that section of the bylaw?
Under that part of the bylaw.
We have applied for a variance. It is from the setback, so we probably would have to resubmit.
I would think you'd need to resubmit to apply for a variance or a special permit under the sign bylaw.
On the sign.
Yeah, and I certainly understand your frustration because there are signs all over this town that are just dog ugly. That's an insult to dogs, you know? I mean, they're awful, and they, you know, they're all over the place, you know? But that's, we're not enforcement officers, you know? But your observation is correct.
I've got a question. I am Michael Lynch. I'm in the butter to PB. As regarding the signs, it states in the bylaws that any internally lit sign is prohibited under the bylaw.
Yeah, I didn't think we-
And I have gone to the building inspector's attention that there are certainly a lot of businesses in town that are violating that, and these sure as hell are used on the ground. Because there's neon signs popping up all along Route 6, and that is prohibited under the bylaws. There's zero relief for anyone.
Can I respond, Madam Chair? This, I don't believe is internally lit within the meaning of that provision of the bylaw. So there is, are signs that have lighting on the inside of them that shine through the signs. This is not one of those cases. These are strings of light that are on the outside.
We're splitting hairs here.
Respectfully, I disagree because actually, if you look at the definition of signs, it talks about lights being on a structure, and I think that's closer to what this is. It's within the very definition of your sign.
Well, regardless, I think this is a conversation for an application that is applied for under relief from the sign section.
Do we have the authority to grant relief under the, from the sign?
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Do we have authority to grant relief from the sign bylaw?
You'd need a lawyer to tell you, but basically, Wellfleet zoning bylaw is written, so variances can only be written given for construction, not for uses.
Right. But what about a special permit?
But, you know, the test for variance is almost impossible.
Right.
I'm not saying impossible, but-
Right. I agree. But then the test for, are we in a, since we've never done it, and I don't know, are we in a, are we allowed to give a special permit for a waiver of signage bylaw?
Well, we can just give a special permit.
Yeah.
And if no one appeals, that's it. I mean, that's the real world. I mean, you can't, you know, you can't, we're not-
I don't want-
Only the planning board can, and then ultimately, town meeting can rewrite the bylaw. We still rewrite the bylaw.
I just don't want to send her off to reapply if we don't have the authority to grant that special permit.
Right. I mean, I think-
If there's no chance at all, then there's no point in having her apply for that.
Your ask, I've given you a layman's opinion. I'm not a Massachusetts lawyer. Eliza's a Massachusetts lawyer. I'd rely on her.
Yeah. No, I mean, I think, you know, we'll evaluate what type of application. I do think you have the authority, at a minimum, to grant a variance. Your bylaw allows this board, and it's consistent with 40A, to grant variances with respect to particular lands or structures. This is clearly a structure under your bylaw, so I think you do have that authority.
As long as no one appeals, you can do whatever you want.
That's right.
As long as appeals-
I sort of have a suggestion. I mean, in terms of where we go tonight, I mean, do you want us to table this? Do you want to withdraw this?
Yeah. Why don't we continue this, and then we'll supplement with another application under the sign bylaw and hear them together.
There's probably a little place you can weave in.
Yeah.
So should we continue this to July 11?
So do you want to come on July 11?
Yeah, why don't you put me down for July 11?
We can just reprint the agenda. Cross out the date.
The next available meeting.
Next meeting is July 11.
Should we continue to July 11?
Yeah.
Second. All in favor?
Thank you.
Okay. And we'll do that with both of them at this point.
That'd be great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Just remember, gave you the option of it. It's in July 11. If you didn't want to. All right. So I am up to-
It's a scribbled, did you?
If I can still find my materials. We are up to 1911. Nealan, 95 Le Counte Hollow Road.
I'm going to recuse myself.
Yes, right. And the board will be, where's my board? The board for this one will be Mr. Halliger, Mr. Lynch, Mr. Drucker, myself, and Mrs. Seoti.
Which one are you doing?
We're doing Nealan. Nealan.
Thank you.
You're not on it.
I think I did find it.
Nope. Mr. Nealan, I have to thank you. I loved the sections.
Thank you for the kind words, Madam Chair.
It was very, very easy to find everything.
Thank you.
I appreciate that.
All right, into these, you did the-
Okay. You may begin.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. My name is John Nealan. I'm here before you this evening, along with my wife, Lorraine, who is sitting to my left and to your right beside me. Also with us tonight is Gary Locke from William &amp; Rogers Engineering, who has assisted us with the site engineering and the plan development for the proposal that we're presenting tonight before you. We've applied for a special permit. It's my understanding through my communications with Chris that we've complied with respect to the requirements of the application process. A short history, which I promise not to bore with any details, but I think it would be at least helpful for some background to the board. My wife and I purchased 89 Le Counte Hollow Road in 1988, 31 years ago. 89 Le Counte Hollow abuts directly to 95 Le Counte Hollow, which is the subject property that we're dealing with tonight. We purchased 95 Le Counte Hollow 21 years ago in 1998. 95 Le Counte Hollow currently consists of 832 square feet, two bedrooms, and one bathroom. The purpose for which we've applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit is request, for the request of a second-story addition for the purpose of adding a third bedroom and one and a half bathrooms. To state the obvious, with the length of time that we've had the pleasure and privilege of being part of the town while not being full-time residents, Wellfleet is a very special place to us, and our 29-year-old twin boys, who were born, we did things a little backwards. We came and purchased in Wellfleet before we started our family, and I can't tell you how many cheers we make to all of us each other when we get together regarding that. Wellfleet has become a second home to our family, and at some point down the road, more than likely, a primary home for my wife, Lorraine, and I. Regarding our children, as I said, they're 29-year-old twins, one of whom was married last year in September, and by all indications, our other son, Jeff, is going to be following soon. Purpose of me mentioning that is our family is expanding, and it's expanding rather quickly. And as a result of that, you know, the kids, their girlfriends, now wives, and friends have always stayed together in the bunk room, as we affectionately call it, within our family, and those days are running short with the expansion of our family. The proposal that we have before the board in requesting the special permit is a dormer-style second-floor addition. This addition would stay within the existing non-conforming footprint of our present home at 95 Le Counte Hollow Road. We've applied- We've applied for this special permit under Section 6.1.5.1 subsection B. And we are aware, and we respect the standard of review that you're charged with implementing with our application, that you have to determine that what we propose would not substantially be more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure that we have. On this important note, members of the board, we would respectfully submit that what we are proposing is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure that is there. As a side note, we've had direct communication with three of our four director butters, one of which is us. I would like to note for the record that we do support our proposal before the board.
Is that unanimous?
The other two neighbors and butters who we contacted, and we supplied them with copies of the plans, and, and of course, they were notified by the board, and we let them know they were going to be notified by the board. It was our understanding that there was a likelihood that they were maybe possibly going to be submitting letters of, if not no objection, possibly even of support of the, of the proposal, was our understanding. I'm not sure if that happened or not, but I can represent to the board that we have very positive communications with our other two abutting neighbors. We do acknowledge and understand that any increase in bedroom size has a board of health, very important board of health issue and component to it. Again, I can represent to the board, and I'm going to ask Gary to speak to that in a moment, that we have met on multiple occasions with the board of health agent, and we understand that they would be, if the zoning board was, saw its way clear to granting our special permit, we do understand, of course, that there would be conditions of other interested governmental bodies, such as the board of health, having to approve what we are requesting. So with that, Madam Chair, and noticing the hour, and with your permission, I would, I would ask to turn this over to Mr. Locke, so he can assist us with answering any technical questions that the board might have. But on behalf of my wife and myself, I would like to thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you.
Good evening, good evening, board. Just a couple of points, except for the fact that we are too close on our sideline setback of the proposed addition means all zoning setbacks in terms of height and all that. The reason we don't have a septic plan in front of you is because we don't need to design a septic plan if you don't approve our special permit. But we, I have reached out to Hillary, and our plan to add a nitrogen-reducing unit to, in front of the septic tank and adding an additional size to the leaching trench would satisfy the board of health's requirement. So she has given us a positive go on that. When designing this addition, I've tried to keep the massing of it somewhat down by extending the eaves across the front and the rear to try to make sure that it does, in fact, fit in with the neighborhood, which I used to live in this neighborhood, actually, many years ago, and I know it does. So happy to answer. Any questions?
I just have one question on the front page here. You have proposed the laundry room?
Yes.
Is that?
That's outside of the building setbacks.
Okay.
It's shown on A0, if you see, it's noted on the site plan.
Oh, okay.
Just let me back off one minute, because I didn't allow anyone in the audience who wanted to speak to speak. I wanted to make sure there were still people awake out there in the audience, just in case. And we did not have any letters, is that?
No.
Okay. Yes, you may go.
I'm fine with this, Madam Chair.
I have no questions.
Looks good to me.
Project looks fine to me.
I was just curious, is to, so what we're looking really at is a volumetric increase in the setback. Do you know what the percentage is that you're increasing there?
Yeah, I would say that to the existing structure, not counting the one-story existing portion of the building. It's a 24-by, it's a 24 by 24 house. And so it's roughly, excuse me, 592 square feet. And so we're adding five, we're doubling that, you know, in terms of the floor, in terms of the floor plan. Again, with the massing, I think that if, looking at the sheet would be 8.1. If you look at the front, you kind of get an idea of what we're trying to do here. This is just a small Cape Cod. We're just trying to make it look like a small Cape Cod cottage.
For the record.
Okay. All right. Are you ready to go to findings?
Okay, move to close the hearing, go to findings.
Do I hear a second? Did you second? Okay, very good. Okay, this is what I have for findings. The lot is in the R1 district. The lot, the dwelling is a lawfully pre-existing, non-conforming structure, having been built in 1955, according to the assessor's office. Existing nonconformity regarding the structure is intrusion into the side setback. The lot is lawfully pre-existing, non-conforming. There will be a volumetric increase in the side setback by virtue of the construction of the second story. The addition to the structure will be constructed entirely on the current footprint. There will be no change in use. There will be no, well, there will be an increase in use, but there'll be another bedroom.
No change.
Okay, there will be no change.
No change.
No change in use. The use conforms with the objectives of the R1 district as stated in Wellfleet zoning bylaw 3.2. There were no appearances or correspondence either for or against the project, except the applicant representing himself as the abutter. I don't think I'll put you in there, though.
He had a vote of support.
He did have a vote of support. The roads, drainage, and other public services are adequate for the project. There will be a 3.98-foot intrusion into the side setback. There will be no increase in the current building coverage of 4.4%. The alteration will not be more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure. After considering the district objectives for the zoning district as provided in Wellfleet zoning bylaw 3.2, and the relevant criteria set forth in Wellfleet bylaw 8.4.2, the board finds that the benefits of the proposal will outweigh any adverse effects on the town and in the vicinity. And just because of past experience, I'm going to spell out 8.4.2.3, that the board has found pursuant to Wellfleet zoning bylaw 8.4.2.3, scenic views from public ways and developed properties have been considerably treated, there will be no additional parking, and there is no public access to the shoreline on the property.
That's good.
Changes?
Yeah.
Corrections?
Move to accept the findings as written.
I will second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of accepting the findings? Now, I believe we want to condition the permit on the board of health.
Yes.
Correct.
Absolutely.
I think that's automatic anyway, but.
Yeah.
Well, let's make it so.
So, based upon the findings, move to grant the special permit conditioned upon the applicant obtaining, obtaining approval from the board of health.
Perfect.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Congratulations.
Thank you so much for your consideration.
We have to stamp some drawings, apparently.
Thank you so much for this.
Yes, we have to stamp some drawings, and I have to give you a piece of paper.
So if you can stick around for one minute.
I need some drawings. You need to.
By the way, thank you for putting this together.
Yes, thank you very much.
Really nice job. But this means you don't get to come back on July 11.
Would you like to come back on June 11?
That's where I've seen you.
Do you need to stamp the building plans as well?
Yeah, some.
Why not? And you also need these two. You need, the engineer is taking these. And you need these two pieces of paper.
Yes, I do.
And then you need a stamped copy of each of these, and then he can get out of here. All right, give him those.
And this.
That's this and that. You need those two stamped copies.
Thank you.
You? All right.
Do we have enough?
I don't know.
Give me a couple more of stamping.
Give him a couple more.
That's fine. That should be enough. Thank you.
How else could you say?
Give us a minute.
That was Nealon. All right, while we are shuffling papers, I'm going to go ahead and let Mr. Taylor come up. 105 Carowack Road, 19813. Hi there. And the board for this will be Mr. Hollinger, Mr. Lynch, Mr. Drucker, me, and Mr. Montreal.
Thank you, Madam Chairman and Chair, board members. I, this is my first rodeo in front of a board, so bear with me.
One moment. Good night, Will.
Thank you.
You picked a great night.
See you later. Be well.
Be well.
Thanks.
He's held on as long as he can.
So we're it for all the rest of the hearings?
Yeah.
We're sorry about that.
We still have an extra.
Oh, do we? Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry.
You're not on this board, you're on the next one.
So greetings.
I think we're ready, we're just a little.
I'm Nathaniel Hall Taylor Williams. I used to be Williams, now I'm Nathaniel Hall Taylor. And at any rate, I, a little bit of background, my grandfather was a year-round resident in Wellfleet, Jack Hall, he was a modern architect and painter. My mother was Noah Hall, a painter, who went to Wellfleet Grammar School and before a bad divorce. At any rate, long story short, I now have two daughters of my own, and the grandfather's homestead on Bound Brook Island has, I wouldn't say it's become a bone of contention, but it's, it's a sort of emotional third rail. And so my wife and I, whom I met in the theater here in Turo and Wellfleet with Kevin Rice at Payman, are deciding to move back to Wellfleet. We've purchased this acre of land in Carowack Road, and our intention is to move here with our two daughters and send them to Wellfleet Grammar School and move here year-round. Cool. She found out last week that she has just received a job year-round at Pam as, as the, let's see if I can see the official.
Province Town Art Museum?
Yeah, at Pam, I'm sorry, at Province Town Art Association Museum. She is the curator of youth education. And so we're thrilled about this news. Obviously, as you all know, year-round jobs and housing on this part of the Cape are few and far, so. I'm a gardener by trade. I worked with Tim Callis here in Wellfleet for many years before breaking off on my own. I plant native plants and build bird gardens. My interest is native ecology and the interaction between birds and plants. And I've turned it into a business, and I have clients here on the Cape and clients in Boston. At any rate, long story short, we are proposing to build two buildings on this acre on Carowack Road. One structure to be converted to an affordable accessory dwelling unit for year-round housing. It would be a two-bedroom studio, which you see the plans before you. And then the other, which would be our year-round residence dwelling, which is a 30 by 36, which we're not going to discuss today. So I guess I'm here today to apply for the AAU permit under 6.21 of the Wellfleet bylaws 8.42. And I don't, should I go on? Where do you?
No, thank you. You did a great job.
No.
We've inspected the site.
Oh, good.
And we have the ticks to prove it. And I'm just kidding. And we've reviewed all your plans.
Okay, terrific. Thank you.
So we only need to know if anyone in the audience has anything to say about this one?
We did have one letter.
And we will hear the letter.
Chris, I'm the reader of the letter. I could be the town crier.
Yes, you could. You do it so well.
You do it so well.
You have to start with "hear, hear."
Oye, oye.
Oye, oye.
You'll get a bell next week.
Some years ago, this is from Stephen Aiken, dated, anyway, it's probably, oh, June 12th. I'm sorry, I missed it. "Some years ago, my wife and I attended the zoning board of appeals, which granted a variance to grant the extension of Carowack Road in spite of the steepness of the grade of the road. At that meeting, we were assured by the zoning board that no building would be allowed on a particular area of the lot in question, map 8, parcel 30. At that time, we spoke of this odd configuration of the lot as the bat ears see on current lot." I'm sorry, it doesn't make sense, but anyway. "Also note proposed driveway that, that extends into this area. The driveway, I'm told, because of the grade, would require buttressing to support it and not a simple intrusion into the no-building area. My wife and I are opposed to this. In regards to the application for an affordable accessory dwelling, we leave it that to the zoning board to decide if this is a new precedent or meets the intent of the statute. My concern is that I was told at the office of the zoning board last week, there was extremely limited oversight of the existing affordable housing units in Wellfleet, and perhaps this fall, someone would be getting around to check to see if these units are in compliance when they are intended use."
Thank you.
Thanks for having me.
All right.
May I respond to him if anyone else would?
You'd like, you'd like to.
For the record, just, I will say that the site plan in question was revised for this, this AAU, and I think in part because we were leaving voicemails for each other. I had told, in this case, Jason Ellis, who's, who made these site plans, that I would like a sort of pull-off parking area for the building in question, 24 by 24 accessory dwelling unit. And I'm willing to work with this abutter and his request in that I didn't actually have a proposed driveway in mind to drive up and onto that hillside. I sort of more had in mind a little, and it's a very flat, as you may remind yourselves from the site visit, it's actually the flattest part of this quite odd-shaped lot. And in fact, you could just, with a permeable, something like gravel, create a two-car or even one-car, you know, pull-off there, as opposed to this driveway. I don't know if any of you had questions concerning from the letter, but.
I'm good with this.
Are you building the house first and then the affordable?
Well, so it sort of depends on, if I'm granted this, I would, it's obviously very expensive to build a house. It's even more expensive to build essentially two dwelling, you know, two, in this case, a dwelling and a studio or a dwelling unit, an AAU. So if I'm granted it, I'm hoping that the bank, the financing could bring down the down payment, that that would allow us to afford to build both at the same time. My intent was, in fact, to build both at the exact same time, in part because of the invasiveness that's caused by excavation and pouring a foundation. And so that I sort of, this whole can was kicked and initiated by that idea that could an excavator give me a price break if he was to build two foundations at the same time? And that was furthered with the framing, which, for these two units, which I'm going with a prefabricated timber frame from Vermont, which is an outfit that's been around since the '70s called Vermont Frames. And they would actually be erecting these timber frames on top of those foundations if we were to be able to get an accessory dwelling unit granted. Because otherwise, it's, it's too large for just a studio. It would be more for unaffordable housing, year-round housing, and therefore a kitchen could be put into it. Otherwise, I'm not sure we would go forward with building both structures at this time. If that answers it, Manny. That being said, you know, there are options here. Justin and I are in discussions, and it may very well be that we build the smaller structure first and potentially dwell in there until the application is, I don't. first and potentially dwell in there until the application is, I don't quite know how to word it, but, you know, at the time that it's completed and we get C of O, then we could begin construction of our dwelling.
I just, I just can't, I don't know if you can just build the affordable unit without having a house on the same, on the lot?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that, and then, and that's the other sort of, you know, I would say worst-case scenario is that we just go ahead and build this dwelling. We don't proceed with this AADU at all and we would just move here to, because I got to get my daughters down here and my wife's, as I say, she's starting this job next week, so we're, you know.
That's a great question.
We're sort of moving forward with the dwelling.
I mean, I have no problem with the application, but an affordable accessory dwelling unit has to be accessory to something.
Yes. Correct.
If you only build the accessory dwelling unit, the quote-unquote accessory dwelling unit, then that is, becomes the principal, the primary structure.
Right. But then, is it possible later on to build the other structure and say, then you come back and apply to make the other one?
I'm sorry, I think that's what I was trying to...
Yeah.
Yes, I think the only, what you could not do is build the one thing and then say, okay, now this is an affordable accessory dwelling unit.
Right, right.
Because it's not accessory to anything.
Because it's not accessory to anything.
Until you build the second thing.
Right.
I understand, yeah.
And then it, yeah.
And I don't know, I mean...
Is there a mechanism to move forward with having a dwelling?
That was what, Justin, would you like to speak to the board?
Yeah, Justin, Building Inspector, he was discussing this with me and I, you know, I've had this happen in a previous time where they lived in a garage over build and then they built the primary structure and then the amenity of the kitchen was removed because they had the same customary subordinate language, but it was not an AADU. He wishes to build an AADU. I don't understand the financing so much because it's not in that part of the road of construction, but his explanation to me was a lot to do to help afford to build the rest of the house. You know what I mean? And so I didn't know how the board would address the work condition, but I was hoping there was a way, I don't know. And you can use my tools of points of progress, C of Os, the different things, the conditions of the road of the dwelling.
I believe you would have to build, you could build that size and later on build the house, I mean, build the main house.
Yeah. What he's trying to do is, is get the permission so that he can use the economies of scale of building both of them at the same time.
Do we have a mechanism to do that?
I don't, I don't know that you can't do that, but the problem is, we also don't have the site plan. Because you don't want to build what, what we've got in front of us, right? You don't want to build this particular proposed driveway.
Oh, 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 just the driveway, that was in reference to this...
Yeah, that doesn't matter, forget about that.
No, no, that was, I'm sorry, that was in reference to the letter.
We don't care, but...
Yeah, but this is fine.
Is, is having them, okay, good.
An accessory, an affordable unit is an exception to the usual provision. You can only have one principal resident.
Right.
We're just approving a, another, a use on the property.
Use on the property.
Issues of driveway and all that, Justin can handle.
Okay, good.
When in doubt, bring it over to Justin.
So then we can approve, can we approve two dwellings on the property that, when neither one exists?
Yeah, I don't see any reason why we can't approve it. I think the problem will be, when he goes to get his CO...
Yes.
And he gets, tries to get a CO for an affordable accessory dwelling unit and it, and there's only one building on the property.
Right.
Justin's going to be presented with deciding, can I give an affordable accessory dwelling unit CO when there's only one building?
That's why he gets the big bucks.
Right. That's right.
That's why we truly own the apartment.
And theoretically, he will say, I can't do this because it's not accessory to any.
But, you know, there's enough...
But maybe it will be.
If he's dwelling in one, it's the principle.
Right.
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 Yeah.
So he couldn't even apply by, for that.
You know, there's enough ambiguity in this thing, so...
Yes.
But I think we can approve it. I don't see any reason why we...
We can go forward.
We can't.
We can do it and then it's up to Justin to sort it out.
Yes.
To the final step.
Okay, great.
Yeah, and I think us doing, approving it gives him the confidence to go forward with this process, where if we don't approve it, then he's left up, totally up in the air.
I think we should approve it.
There are two houses right here on the plan, so...
Right.
Yeah.
I think all we're approving is the affordable accessory dwelling.
Right.
Right.
The building is just, you can do as of right, you don't get a special permit.
Don't get a special permit, there's plenty of land on the property. I would warn you about frame, the prefab framing, just because of bitter experience, make sure the elevations are correct. We had a house that was, the frame came down to go on the foundation and it was too tall.
I think that Justin may have mentioned cutting a roof off of a building.
Yes, so it was not a pleasant scene, so...
Believe me, yeah, no, and you may notice from the elevation drawings that it's inset to the hill quite a bit to...
Yes, right.
To, you know, work within the 28-foot height.
My hair goes up when people have prefabs just because of that, so...
Thank you.
Okay. So we are, we are closing the hearing to move to findings.
To close the hearings and move to findings.
Second?
Sure.
Okay, all in favor? You have the findings, sir.
I'm going to do findings.
I want you to do findings, yes.
This is an application for an affordable accessory dwelling unit under Wellfleet zoning bylaw 6.21. The applicant proposes to construct a two-story affordable, affordable accessory dwelling unit. The proposed AADU is a detached building, namely the Bristol model, designed and furnished by Vermont Frames of Heinsburg, Vermont. The livable floor area of the proposed AADU is approximately 1152 square feet. The board has made an inspection of the subject lot. There is one objection to the application. Pursuant to Wellfleet zoning bylaw 8.4.2, the board finds that nearby land uses will not be damaged by the proposed AADU, that the roads, drainage, and other public services are adequate in relation to the location of the proposed AADU, that the proposed AADU will contribute to the diversity of affordable housing opportunities locally, that there are no seasonal consequences to the proposal, that the scenic views from public ways and developed properties have been considerately treated, that the visibility of parking is minimized, and that no traditional public access to or along the shoreline has been affected. After considering the district objectives for the zoning district as provided for in Wellfleet zoning bylaw 3.2, the purpose of Wellfleet zoning bylaw 6.21 of promoting the development of affordable rental housing in Wellfleet for year-round residents, and the relevant criteria set forth in 8.4.2, the board finds that the benefits of the proposal will outweigh any adverse effects on the town and the vicinity. That's all I have, Madam Chairman, but I have more if we approve the findings.
Do I have a motion to approve the findings?
I'll make a motion to approve the findings. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Okay, now unfortunately we get to the boring part, which is all the statutory conditions. I'll move to grant the special permit, subject to the following conditions. One, the special permit conditions that follow shall be deemed an affordable housing deed restriction in a form satisfactory to the zoning board of appeals in accordance with section 6.212 of the Wellfleet zoning bylaw. Failure to comply with any of these provisions shall be considered a violation of special permit requirements and may be subject to fines established in section 8.3 of the zoning bylaw and/or to enforcement require, requiring removal of the unit. That means you don't rent it out in the summer, at summer rates, that's really what that means. Two, all occupants of the affordable accessory dwelling unit described herein shall upon initial application annually thereafter on the 1st of September submit to the town or its agent documentation to confirm their eligibility for the dwelling unit. All dwelling units must be rented to those meeting established guidelines for low or moderate income families. For the purpose of this section of the bylaw, low-income families shall have an income less than 80% of the town of Wellfleet median family income, and moderate-income families shall have an income between 80% and 120% of the town of Wellfleet median family income as determined by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, published income guidelines as may from time to time be amended. Maximum rents of the affordable accessory dwelling unit shall be established in accordance with HUD published fair market rental guidelines. Property owners are required to submit to the town or its agent information on the rent to be charged. Each year thereafter on the 1st of September, they shall submit information on annual rents charged to the town or its agents or forms provided for that purpose. Rents may be adjusted annually in accordance with amendments to the HUD fair market rental guidelines. There's more.
I know.
Don't worry.
I know.
The property owner named herein shall complete and submit to the building inspector, if you wake up, an application for a building permit to allow a change in use. The septic system is required to meet current Title V standards and shall be reviewed and approved by the health agent. The inspector of buildings and health agents shall inspect the premises for compliance with public safety and public health codes. The property owner named herein shall obtain a certificate of occupancy from the building inspector prior to the affordable accessory dwelling unit being occupied. The affordable accessory dwelling unit shall not be separated by ownership from the principal dwelling unit or principal structure. The lot containing an affordable accessory dwelling unit shall be subject to a recorded restriction that shall restrict the lot owner's ability to convey interest in the affordable accessory dwelling unit except leasehold estates for return of the restriction. So that's it. It sounds onerous, but there are about 20 of them in Wellfleet and folks have had no trouble, to my knowledge, complying, but these are statutory requirements.
I understand. And I actually had the pleasure of seeing Joe Powers on the second-to-last day of his work and he made sure that I understood that this was literally coming down from HUD, you know, that essentially I was, I would, and I've had the fortune and misfortune of property managing a multifamily in Dorchester for the last two years. That's a section eight.
I understand.
So I understand it quite well, actually, so thank you.
Okay.
I will move to grant the special permit?
Based on?
Based on the findings and conditions.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
All, thank you.
Now, do we have to give him anything?
Yeah, we have to stamp, I think.
I would still stamp the site plan.
We still stamp the site plan?
Thank you.
It'll work out.
It'll work out?
It always does. Thank you. I like your attitude.
So we want the site plan.
Just the site plan.
Yep, and you need...
What's today's, okay, we have one more site plan?
One more. One more site plan?
Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, that's the site.
Just need to give you this and a sheet of paper that...
And you get two sheets of paper as well. You don't have to sign the thing, no, we just stamp things and it's...
It's two hours past my bedtime.
What happened, this is all going to tell you that, they're going to, you have the city secretary's 14 days to sign and then there's a 20-day appeal.
Got it.
And so I'll have to go in and sign that we did this and then there'll be a 20-day appeal in which your neighbors can go to court if they don't like it, but, you know, and then after that, you're done. And through that, you get it and you follow all those instructions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I knew your grandfather. Yes. We knew that the other property might be an issue.
I'll put this in Chris's bag.
Uh, we have one more.
Oh, we have one more?
But it's, I don't know if it's a stamp, it's not a stamp.
It's just a use.
It's just a use. We have one more, we will not leave these people out, they have been very, very...
I'm not sitting on this one, I'm on strike.
No, you're sitting on it.
Oh, you need me, okay.
This is a good one, it's about ice cream.
You're just sitting on it, that's the way it is. I do indeed, I have, I have everything, I think I have, I put it here a minute ago.
No, I don't want...
Yes, I've got that. And this is...
10 o'clock, I charge, time and a half.
I know, so does I, so do I. It is, but particularly these poor applicants who've been sitting through a very, very long meeting, so shape up.
Yes, ma'am.
1914 La Roca for Dunkin' Donuts. Could you tell us your name and what you are proposing?
Yeah, good evening, my name's Neil Faulkner and I'm with Courtney La Raca, who's my director of operations. We own and run the Dunkin' Donuts in town, or more affection, more correctly, I guess, the Dunkin' in town, because we dropped the donuts. So we're decided this year to do a product extension, which is ice cream. We currently have soft-serve ice cream, have had it for, for years in the particular store, and we decided we wanted to try scooping hard-packed ice cream. And we came up to city to find out if there was any requirements. We found out that recently you've changed your bylaws to consider, we have a cart, a small cart, that we want to wheel out in the afternoon, set it up on our patio where we have our walk-up window and some outdoor seating, and scoop six to eight flavors of ice cream. And have come to find out that is now considered a food truck, which you require a special permit for. So we don't want to do anything incorrectly, so we filed under your 5.3.2 and 8.4.2 special permit and requesting a special permit, so we can scoop six to eight flavors of ice cream for the summer and just, just for the season.
Okay, and is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this? Yes.
What a patient man.
Very patient audience, yes.
I've learned to be patient, yes. Dan Silverman, we're, my wife and I are not direct abutters, but we live diagonally across from the back of the Dunkin' Donuts property. Been there since, since it was the finest, which goes back a ways. I, I'm just here mostly to, because I was curious as to what, what was being proposed. That, that site is already have, you know, some pretty intense uses on it and we just wanted to make sure that, that what was being proposed was not going to further detriment the nature of the, of the, of the neighborhood. As it is, there's multiple uses there, the housekeeping on the property, and I'm not sure this is necessarily the Dunkin' Donuts fault, but the housekeeping on the property is less than, less than ideal. We've had discussions with the owner of the property about the lighting, which was, we considered to be intrusive, the lighting spills, some lighting was added, which spills well over the property and shines into our property. We were assured that that would be taken care of, it wasn't. Now whether that's, you know, Dunkin' Donuts responsibility or Mr. McGregor's responsibility, you know, we've had a couple of discussions and were assured that it would be addressed and hasn't been. There was, when the property was originally converted to, to the uses that it is now, there was talk about screening, that never happened. I know I've had some discussions with the building inspector as to whether some of these things could be mitigated and, and to date, really, the property is maintained to a minimal standard. And, yeah, I don't begrudge, you know, the applicants, the, you know, what they're proposing to do and would like some assurances that it isn't going to be, you know, significantly more impactful to the neighborhood than what's already going on there. You know, if, if there's not going to be lighting, if there's not going to be, you know, a lot of additional traffic generated, I guess we don't really have a problem, but my concern is that the, the use of that property continues to expand, you know, kind of beyond, beyond what was originally permitted there. We just want to make the board aware of, of what the, what the effects on the neighborhood are. Thank you for your consideration.
I'm not sure I set the board on this one, but it is Hileger, Drucker, Inger, Lynch, and C of O. Anyone else?
I just want to add, because I did, I did have to discuss with Dan a couple of years ago, um, property is real busy.
You might want to go to the microphone so they can pick it up.
I'll go to the microphone, sir.
You want to be seen on television, don't you?
Yeah, oh, yeah, I want to be on TV. Justin Post, Building Inspector. We did have a discussion about this a couple of years ago, because it is busy over there, there's a RTA, maybe bus stop added over time, I tried to figure out where they came from. Maybe the owner would be amicable to adding some Leland's or something down this residential side to the right at some point to help along, maybe this applicant, I don't know, but I know it's been an issue, just that, you know what I mean, the residential side to this property. That's my input, that's it.
What about the light, the lighting that Dan?
Um, I don't know about the light spillage, but every commercial property has light spillage and to have like some sort of non-disiduous tree, something that keeps green all year to keep light on the property or something, and maybe something has been discussed through time with Mr. McGregor there. I'm not aware of it, I've, I've had a fence fixed out back of what in my time, but, um, yeah. That's about it.
All right, thank you. Okay.
I'd like to ask, was this plan, approved plan, do you know?
Yeah, that, that's the existing proof plan.
No.
No, it's not.
No, it's not.
This is the site plan that shows the drive-through that they tried to do a couple of years ago.
Oh, that was asked to be attached to, Courtney.
Yes, I did, that was from the proposed drive-through. That was on file.
I think that may have gotten in there because of...
The previous cases.
Yes, and that was also... Yes, and that was also.
Rather than because we were showing any kind of site, yeah.
I believe they did use it to show the proposed location of the cart, but it's a little deceptive to look at it, because it shows a very different site than what exists.
Yes, all the, you know, the proposed fencing and all that stuff was on this.
Right.
It was before my time.
Yes.
I've only owned, I've only owned the store for three and a half years.
Yeah, okay. Nick, did you?
You would start with me, a couple of things, why do you have a light on this cart? You've got a four-foot, 48-inch tubal fluorescent fixture.
It's a pre-made fab cart, and the light was just built into the cart.
Well, that we can't approve, I don't believe.
You don't need to turn it on.
Well, it doesn't matter, it's on there, so. The other thing, too, is this a food truck? I mean, we've got to open up the can of worms.
Food trucks are allowed in the C1 district. It, there's, there's been some discussion as to whether this is a food truck or whether this is a roadside stand, temporary.
Yeah.
Were it to be a roadside stand temporary, they can do it by right. As a food truck in the C1 district cart, because a food truck can be motorized or non-motorized, so it is a special permit, so it's, you know, it's what, and.
I don't, I don't have a huge problem with it, I don't like the fact that you have a light on it, because in respect to the neighbors, you're probably the busiest store in town, and now that you're sitting here in front of the board, I would really like to see you do a better job of keeping the place clean, because that whole area is getting destroyed with Dunkin' Cups, and if somebody can get out and police it, you might do better with your neighbors, but the neighbors are not too happy with Dunkin', with the, it's chaotic in the summer. No, I understand, it's very, very busy, so, I don't have a problem with this, but I would like to see, in the conditions, that this place is kept clean, that you got to clean up the trash, that you have one of your employees clean up the trash, and no light, there's enough light coming out of that place, you don't need another one.
Yeah, well, this is mostly for the daylight out.
Exactly, that was where I was going with that, but I'd like to see the light removed.
I actually, the cart hasn't shown up yet, it's being sent to me, so I haven't seen any light on it, I don't have the cart.
It's in the plan.
Right, I understand, I don't know, I mean, I'm sure we can just take off the light.
Well, we would, I wouldn't approve these plans as they're put in front of us with the light on it, because that's adding to the.
The light's not a necessity.
You can, we could add it as a condition, but also, just, I guess, I don't have a problem with it, but it's just trying to be better neighbors to the neighbors down there, because the trash sometimes is getting out, and I know we're really busy in July and August, and I know you guys are shorthanded, as is everybody else, but just to make that little bit effort would probably be really respectful for the neighbors.
Can we try to keep the place very clean? We're very cognizant of that, we open year-round, we, everybody there except me is a local.
I'm there, so.
So we're very cognizant, and we'll work with Courtney and our staff to get out there and do a better job.
I'm a painter.
Yeah, we're there pretty much every day.
I'm there all the time.
Appreciate it.
There's not many places to go.
Don't worry about it, we're all.
And people just drop their cups in the parking lot, if it's windy, it blows everywhere, so we gotta do a better job, thank you.
Did you have anything else, Manny?
No, that's.
I have a question. Yep.
Your hours, and also the length of the season?
Pretty much Memorial Labor Day, even though we've already passed that, you know, maybe September 15, but this is gonna be three months of the year. That's all we're looking at it to do on that. Hours, you know, probably set up around 11 and not past 8 o'clock at night, so less than the store hours. Stores open in September, we're not gonna have this open.
And it's still daylight, pretty much.
Yeah, basically daylight, daylight hours. We're gonna open it up, not in the morning morning, but probably, we'll start setting up at 11, and my, our thought process was shut down at 8.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Question?
I have no comments or questions.
Question?
No, I don't have a problem with it, I mean, the issues that Mr. Silverman raises are there, I'm not sure that they're, I mean, they're real, and forgot about the tour buses that use it as a parking lot from time to time after they drop people off on the beaches, but that's a problem for some other folks, I guess, but, you know, the, in the approval, if we do approve it, the hours of operation should be stated, and I think it should provide that it's, you intend it to be a stationary cart?
No, we're gonna wheel it in at night.
No, I mean, but it's not gonna be wheeled around the parking lot.
No, we're gonna put it on the patio.
Well, you know.
We have a patio.
I understand, but then, you know.
Put it on the patio.
And again, I hate to ask you, but if it can find.
We're gonna plug in, we're gonna plug in, so keep it cold, so we have to be in one spot.
No, and fine, but, you know, I always think of the futures, someone comes up and I think, well, maybe we'll ring a bell and go through the parking lot. I've seen crazier things.
It's a, yeah.
You know, maybe, maybe I've lived a life of thinking the worst, and I've never been disappointed, I want you to know that.
But if somebody, but if somebody went around ringing the bell, they could also pick up trash.
That's right, but I'm just saying, the idea of a cart there, I mean, I think is okay. I just want to restrict it as a stationary cart during certain hours, that's all, and you're taking it at night, which I think is your intent, your intent.
Listen, we are busy July through the end of August, and we keep open all year long, and we, and just to be blunt, Lance, you guys are all locals, you guys all know, we go from 1X to 4X, but we only go to 4X for 65 days, and we've got to try to figure out how to bring as much money as any business does in this town, because my business and my philosophy is to be, we do, we try to be 365 days a year, we close two days at the store, and I need to generate some more money to be able to continue to employ everybody in full-time whenever else, so this is a way that I thought would be sort of cool, because there's not a lot of hand-packed ice cream down at this point. You go farther, and you go back up, and you've been to Jerry's up at Eastham, whatever, there's just, there's not a lot, and it would be a fun thing to do, and maybe my mom's getting a coffee or iced coffee, the kids could have some ice cream. So this is, you know, limited hours, you know, 11 to 8, that's the plan, three months of the year, that's it. The cart goes in at night, comes out, it's done.
Perfect.
stays stationary, and you would keep the lights off of it, turn the light off.
Well, during the day, they wouldn't.
There's no, we're not gonna really be open at night, so it's really.
Right, so no need for lights.
Yeah, okay, I move, we'll close the hearing, go to, move, close the hearing, go to findings.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, here are the findings, thanks to Will, who had to leave, but, yeah. LaRocca for Dunkin' Donuts requests for a special permit to sell ice cream on a seasonal basis outside of the building. The application is for a special permit for an outside small ice cream cart serving six flavors. The ice cream cart would be rolled in and out of the building on a daily basis. This application is at the existing Dunkin', I guess I have to call it, restaurant located in Wellfleet at 2393 State Highway 6, MAP 23, parcels to 11, and I would add in the C1 district, which I don't think is down here. The applicable provisions for this application under the Town of Wellfleet zoning bylaws are Section 5.3, including without limitation, Section 5.3.2, and Section 8.4.2. The proposed ice cream cart is defined as, is a food truck as defined in Section 2.1 of the Town of Wellfleet zoning bylaws. The proposed ice cream cart could also be deemed roadside stand temporary, as ice cream can be classified as a perishable good as set forth in Section 2.1 of the Town of Wellfleet zoning bylaws. I believe I'm gonna take that out, but I wanted you to hear it, just so you'd know.
Okay.
Just for fun, just for the fun of it. Section 8.4.2 provides that the Zoning Board of Appeals shall not grant a special permit unless it finds that the benefits of the proposal to the town will outweigh any adverse effects on the town or the vicinity, taking into consideration the stated district objectives. Commercial, the district objective for the commercial district pursuant to Wellfleet Bylaw 3.2 is to provide for small and moderate-scale business development while minimizing visibility of parked autos and avoiding creation of hazards or congestion. The board finds that the proposed location for the proposed ice cream cart is suitable in that it is compatible with nearby land uses which would not be damaged by the proposed use nearby. Board finds that the roads, drainage, and other public utilities are sufficient to support the proposed ice cream cart. The board finds that the site for the proposed ice cream cart will not contribute to environmental damage. The board finds that the proposed ice cream cart will not materially impact peak congestion, but otherwise will not contribute to the diversity of services, housing opportunities, or year-round employment. And that's the end of those, we have a few conditions, if you approve that.
I move to accept findings as written.
Five seconds.
I don't have enthusiasm at this point.
All in favor? Okay, the conditions that we would, might, would put on this that have been proposed anyway, the hours of operation may not exceed 11 a.m. to 8 p.m. The ice cream cart shall be stored indoors when not in active use and be stationary outside in its regular location, and that there will be no lights on the cart.
No lights illuminated.
No lights illuminating the cart.
So he doesn't have to remove the lights that are there.
Take the bulb, though.
Yeah.
I'll find a bulb, take it out.
Mm-hmm, okay, all right. Anything else?
No, move to grant the special permit, subject to the conditions as written.
Second.
All in favor? Do we need to?
Thank you very much, all.
Time to make the donuts.
We don't need to say anything.
Just the way that bylaw is written, and this is a not, I just, that bylaw is really confusing.
Yes.
I know it's new, but it's really confusing, because I don't think this should be considered a food truck.
Right.
They call it a food trucker, but there's the guy in the back, complain to him.
Yeah, right. We need to gather those things for the temporary cart on your list.
Alfred wrote it.
There's a member of the planning board here, he wrote it.
Technically, we had a big argument over whether this was a food truck or a food stand.
I don't think this is gonna come in front of you guys very often, but, you know, because this, I could have done it inside without.
Without anything, of course, of course.
And it was just, this is sort of more fun for the kids or whatever to have it outside on the patio, and it's a non-motorized cart, I don't know, it just seemed to be weird to be in a food truck.
You are not the only one who found this bylaw confusing, but.
It's hard for me to convey it, but the definition, I appreciate that I had something to work with, so at least advice is cordial.
Well, you know.
Right, no, I.
Can't go anywhere yet, don't be packing up, we're not going anywhere.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck this summer.
I would point out that we do not write the bylaws, we enforce them.
Dan, thank you for coming in.
Is this a record?
That's true, I stay incorrect.
It's like town meetings.
All right, all right, wait, before you go anywhere, I have two sets of minutes you must approve. We have the.
Should we deem them approved by acclamation?
Yes, no doubt, but just let me do them one at a time, the April minutes, I need a.
I will move, I'll move to the April minutes.
Yes, no, you can't move the April minutes.
So I'm here, so I'm here.